Good afternoon, welcome to the March 16th Policy Session of the Phoenix City Council. I will call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilwoman DeCecio. Councilwoman Garcia.
Here.
Councilwoman Guardado. Councilman Noakowski. Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Vice Mayor Williams.
Here.
And Mayor Gallego.
Here. Thank you so much for joining us. We'll begin with council information and follow-up requests.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to share District 4 updates. First, I want to commend ID Media Salon. For their recent celebration of 34 years in business, the salon located on Central at Thomas Road has been through thick and thin of Phoenix's growth. Congratulations to them and all small businesses in Phoenix who helped make Phoenix unique and inviting. Next, I want to reiterate the availability of COVID testing site at Maryvale Community Center. The static site is open three days every week, Monday and Fridays from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Wednesdays from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. The Wednesday's time was updated to meet the need of the community in offering evening testing hours. In addition, I want to remind the public of the food box distribution that is taking place. The next distribution date is Monday, March 29th. While I also want to commend all city employees for adapting to COVID changes, I want to highlight the Phoenix Fire Department. The department's greatest priority was to ensure seamless emergency service delivery. They faced the challenge, and through it all, they maintained 100% operational capacity. So kudos to them, all for a job well done. Finally, stay in the know with District 4 by following us on social media. On Twitter, look for @PhoenixDistrict4 and join the conversation. Thank you, Mayor. Those are my updates.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of updates. First off, we're doing vaccines at Harmon Park Wednesday, March 17th to Tuesday, March 23rd. You can call 602-542-1000 for South Central residents. Wanted to invite folks to join us on our next Facebook Live, Educate with the A. We're going to be having vaccine information in Spanish on Tuesday, the 23rd at 6:00 p.m. And lastly, I wanted to thank the Parks Department publicly for two pocket parks in our district in South Phoenix that have been worked on. Lenan Park, we were able to reopen this last month. And we are finally going to reopen Atoto Park. The ribbon cutting ceremony will be Thursday, March 30th at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.
Councilwoman Guardado. I think you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So I just want to remind folks of the COVID testing options still in District 5. Excited to be able to say that at the Maryvale Community Center, we're going to be doing testing on Wednesdays. It was a small change, was a huge change for a lot of our constituents that work during the day. And we'll be doing testing from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., which I think is a good option. There will be a drive-through site at St. Augustine Catholic Church on 71st Avenue, just south of Indian School this Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to noon. And then I'm also excited to announce that we will be having our first virtual public meeting for the Grand Canal Scape Phase 3 Wednesday, March 24th at 6:00 p.m. Staff will discuss the plans to revitalize the area along the Grand Canal from 47th Avenue to 75th Avenue. Also excited to work with neighbors and community partners like the Cartwright Elementary School District, Phoenix Union, the Wester School of Science and Technology, and the Milwaukee Brewers to make this happen. A big thank you to the Streets Department for moving forward on this. I know it's something that we've been talking about for a little while. So excited that the time has finally come as we're moving forward on this. And I'm confident that as a team, we are going to develop a wonderful area for Maryvale families to walk, run, bike, and enjoy our canal. And with that last update, we had an amazing meeting a few weeks ago with all the different... I guess this is the great thing about Zoom, that we were able to get everyone in the same screen from 101st Avenue all the way down to 7th Avenue, and everyone came together. And we were able to talk about different projects that we want to work on in 2021 and talk a little bit about the budget, which was incredibly exciting and things that people want to see moving forward. So excited for that and excited for things moving forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the Parks Department. Phase 3 of Deans Hill Park was completed, and we had the ribbon cutting. And the pickle courts are full every day, I understand. So congratulations on the job well done. And it looks just like you promised the community. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Looking forward to getting the park budget for that, the support of the great work that they're doing up there. Any additional council member updates? Let's see. Want to congratulate the City Clerk's Office on completing a successful election last week. And congratulations to Councilwoman Guardado and Councilwoman Stark on your reelection. Thank you to everyone who participated. I want to also acknowledge the great work that our community partners and our city is doing to distribute vaccines to our residents. Although we are not the public health authority, we have stepped up again. This weekend, our firefighters were out partnering with Walgreens and Equality Health to put together a great event at Cortez Park. And hundreds of our residents got vaccinated. Many were able to register by phone, so those for whom online registration wasn't working had a great option. And there was also walk-ups for individuals. Excited, as Councilmember Garcia mentioned, for the vaccine event at Harmon Park for residents in 85007, 85009, 85003, 85004, and 85034 zip codes. Cautiously optimistic about the COVID trends we are seeing, but certainly the pandemic is not over. And I would encourage everyone to continue to wear a mask and make safe decisions for you and your loved ones. I joined Councilwoman Guardado in being excited about the Grand Canal project moving forward. And for those who are looking for more projects of that type, the city has kicked off our active transportation planning process and would invite you to participate. We're seeing more investments in pedestrian-friendly, bicycle-friendly, and other forms of mobility. With today's council meeting, the published agenda did have budget and then parks update, but we will be taking the parks presentation first. There is no call for an executive session today. And because budget is our main item today, we will not have any budget updates from the city manager until we go to that item. So we will begin with reopening parks and Recreation Department outdoor amenities. And I will turn to Inger Erickson to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of council, today Cynthia Aguilar, the Acting Parks and Recreation Director, is here to talk about outdoor parks and sports fields and the reopening, as well as swimming pools and the Easter weekend. With that, I'll turn it over to Cynthia Aguilar for the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Cynthia Aguilar, Acting Parks and Recreation Director. And as Inger mentioned, I'm here to discuss the reopening of our outdoor park amenities, the 2021 pool season, and our plans for Easter weekend. Thank you. Throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, the Parks and Recreation Department has taken direction from the City Council and followed CDC guidelines to take appropriate measures to keep the public and our staff safe. Following this guidance, our parks have remained open throughout the entire pandemic, while some amenities have been closed intermittently. Many of our outdoor amenities are currently open. In addition to park open space, this includes playgrounds, tennis and pickleball courts, our trails and golf courses, and many others as listed on this slide. Throughout the pandemic, we have also seen a substantial increase in the usage of all of our outdoor park amenities. Our last park amenity closures were put in place effective December 3rd at the direction of the City Council. At that time, Phoenix was in the substantial spread category for all three benchmarks used to track COVID. To help mitigate the spread of COVID, athletic field reservations were temporarily suspended, and amenities such as our sports complexes, Ramadas, basketball and volleyball courts, and our outdoor fitness equipment were closed. The closures were to remain in place until Phoenix returned to the moderate level. Additional closures previously in place included special event activity requests and park permits for special activities. We have been monitoring the COVID trends closely, and based on the original benchmarks, we were approaching the moderate range. However, on March 3rd, the Arizona Department of Health Services revised the community transmission indicators and community risk levels based on CDC guidance, establishing a fourth community risk level to their reporting charts. In their reporting, there are now only two indicators used to reflect community risk. Based on the latest data available from February 21st, Phoenix is in the moderate transmission for percentage of positive cases per 100,000 people. We are in the substantial transmission for the number of total new cases per 100,000 people. Based on this, our current overall risk level is at substantial. Although the overall risk is currently in the substantial category, since December 27th, there has been a steady decline in the percent positivity in COVID-19, as shown on this chart. There has also been a decline in the number of weekly cases per 100,000 people since January 3rd. Due to the steady decline in both of these indicators, we are recommending that we reopen outdoor park amenities with modifications. At this time, I would like to add that the Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Board, Tony Moya, has also expressed that the Parks Board is supportive of our recommendations. Before we go into the recommendations, I thought it'd be important to acknowledge that we recognize the importance of ensuring the health and safety of our employees. As of March 8th, all of our employees, with the exception of those teleworking full-time, are now eligible to receive the COVID vaccine. Additionally, we have all of the proper PPE our employees need to perform their jobs. And all of our employees are also required to wear masks and try to maintain six feet of physical distance from other employees as well as the public. At this time, we are recommending that we reopen the following: Ramadas and picnic tables, basketball and volleyball courts, and outdoor fitness equipment, in addition to sports complexes and athletic field reservations for practices, games, and local tournaments with modifications. To ensure we reopen athletic fields in a safe manner, we have developed return-to-play guidelines that each user group will be required to adhere to. The guidelines follow CDC recommendations and have been reviewed by a public health professional, and their feedback has been incorporated. Examples of some of the requirements in the guidelines include: requiring groups over 50 to submit a COVID safety plan, showing how they will meet the return-to-play guidelines; requiring that masks be worn by spectators, coaches, and officials, as well as players when not actively playing, although still encouraged; and also that spectators maintain six feet of distance from the field and from members outside of their household. We are also recommending that we open pools and splash pads for the 2021 pool season, also with modifications. In a typical swim season, we hire more than 600 seasonal aquatics employees to staff our 29 pools. Of these 600 employees, close to 400 return to work for us each summer. Due to not opening pools last year and the uncertainty as to whether or not we would reopen this year, we have experienced significant challenges in our recruitment efforts, as approximately half of our returning seasonal staff have not applied to return to work for us this summer. As a result, our current staffing levels are significantly lower and would allow us to open 12 of 29 pools at this time. We have identified 12 pools based on pool attendance and geographic location to ensure pools are open in communities throughout the city. The pool season would begin as it normally does on Memorial Day weekend on May 29th and would run through August 1st, with extended season running through September 6th. This season, the focus would be on open swim and swim lessons, with modifications that I will go into shortly. All pools would be cool kid pools and include free entry for open swim participants under the age of 18. We've also developed a COVID safety plan for reopening our pools. The plan has also been reviewed by a public health professional and follows recommendations from the CDC, as well as our lifeguard and swim lesson certification agencies. The plan calls for reduced capacities, enhanced cleaning protocols, and modifications to our open swim and swim lesson formats. Some examples of these modifications include implementing reservable blocks of time for open swim to allow for cleaning in between user groups; restricting the number of guests in our shower areas. In some cases, depending on the number of showers, that would be one at a time; and modifying swim lessons to minimize close contact between instructors and participants. We also wanted to share information with you about our plans for Easter weekend. Historically, Easter has been one of the busiest weekends in our parks throughout the year, especially in some of our larger regional parks. We are recommending that we implement the same plan we did last year, which was very successful for us. In the plan, all parks would be open. However, to minimize the potential of large group gatherings, parking lots would be closed, with the exception of accessible parking spaces. Additionally, just as we did last year, there would be a strong staff presence in our parks that weekend. That includes our Parks and Recreation staff, our management team, and staff from other city departments who assist us as well. Last year, we were able to greet park users and answer any questions that they had on park rules or restrictions for the weekend. We also plan on implementing, again, a comprehensive communication plan where we get information out in English and Spanish and post signage in and around our parks. And again, the intent is really to minimize the potential for large group gatherings, which we were successful in doing last year. At this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Saskia Papescu, an epidemiologist who serves as a contracted public health consultant for the City of Phoenix. Dr. Papescu has been providing advice on reopening our outdoor park amenities. Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much for having me today. And I'd also like to introduce my colleague, Dr. Phillips, who's also on the call. And I want to take a moment to congratulate everybody in Arizona and thank you for the hard work, because today we hit over a million people with their full vaccination status, which is really exciting. So big public health round of applause. You know, I want to... I don't see the slide anymore, but I want to take a moment to really discuss that these protocols are based off of risk-matched measures, meaning what we're seeing in the community is decreasing transmission. Thank you so much. So with the new guidance that we're using right now, so you see new cases over 100,000. And this is actually back from February. We're continuing to see those downwards trends, which is a really optimistic, positive moment right now for Phoenix, for Arizona, and for the country. The key to that is being a good steward of this very, I want to say positive, but decreasing trend. And what we are seeing from publicly available data that I pulled today was actually about 16 cases in Maricopa County per 100,000 daily, which means this number that you're seeing, the 75.91, is a little bit old and higher, actually. So that means we're continuing to do good work. People are getting vaccinated, they're wearing their masks, and they're mindful of COVID restrictions. So as we are seeing this downwards trend in a very exciting time, we also want to take this incrementally and take it from a risk-matched approach, meaning we don't go from zero to 60. So the park guidance and the aquatic safety protocols are really married in that, meaning, you know, we're mindful of what means high risk, large groups gathering together, unmasked interactions indoors. So being mindful that these outdoor environments are lower risk, but that if we focus on reducing the number of people together and ensuring that masks are worn, hand hygiene, disinfection, and all of these protocols are present, that they can be quite successful. So this is a nice incremental strategy to reopening the really important piece of community right now, which are parks and pools.
Thank you, Dr. Papescu. And with that, I just wanted to provide a recap of our recommendations, which is that we are recommending that we resume athletic field reservations, again, for practices, games, and local tournaments with modifications; that we open our sports complexes, Ramadas and picnic tables, basketball and volleyball courts, outdoor fitness equipment, as well as our pools and splash pads beginning May 29th and of our Easter weekend planned. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. We do have four members of the public to address the council. And then I will go to Councilwoman Guardado first. We'll begin with Blaine Atkinson, followed by Brent Kleinman.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, thank you for allowing us to speak today. I'm a youth football coach for I-9 Sports. And we would love to see the parks open back up so our children can get out there and play again. And we just finished the season with the I-9 over at the local Suaral Elementary School, Sequoia, sorry. And they're extremely safe and extremely thorough with the six-feet distance, with the kids coming off the field, putting masks on. We had an outstanding season this last season. It ended two weeks ago. And we're hoping we could really get the kids back out in the parks. The Roadrunner Park's a much larger park for us, and we can have a lot more kids out there. So we just really appreciate it if that vote went to open up the parks again for the sporting events. And thanks again for allowing us to speak, and we appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize for... Mr. Kleinman, we're going to pause for a second before we go to public comment. I wanted to go to the city attorney to remind everyone again about the rules for speaking at city council meetings.
Thank you, Mayor. For items on today's agenda for discussion, members of the public may speak for up to two minutes to comment on the item. Comments must be related to the agenda item. The city code provides that speakers must present their comments in a respectful and courteous manner. Profane language and personal attacks on members of the public, council members, or staff are not allowed. A person who violates these rules will lose their opportunity to continue to speak.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. We want to hear from the public, but it's important to have civil discourse. Residents want to be able to participate, but we need to do so within the guidelines that the city attorney shared. Mr. Kleinman, thank you for your patience. We will go next to you, followed by Randy Pierce.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This is exciting news to see that the park is opening back up. I have a couple of questions I think are probably targeted to Cynthia or to Inger. In regards to the Easter plans, and I was glad that that made it into the presentation. Closing the parking lot in a lot of these city parks just relegate the cars to the neighborhoods. Do you have any plans, and I'll speak specifically to Encanto Park, as far as monitoring the parking on the streets, or you just want to keep people out of the parking lot, which then puts them throughout our entire neighborhood, is my first question. The second question is in regards to the pools. I was happy to... I guess it's not even a question, more of a comment. I was happy to see you're doing the cool kids programs for that to allow the youth to get into the pool. So I want to thank you for choosing Encanto Park as one of the pools that you're opening and look forward to seeing people running around the park again real soon. So thank you very much, and just curious about that Easter parking issue.
Thank you. And we'll go to staff to answer that, but I'm going to finish our two public comments, go to Councilwoman Guardado, and then we'll go to staff to answer that. So Randy Pierce will be next, followed by Rick Kelsey.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. My name is Randy Pierce. I run your neighborhood soccer league in the area of District 3. And I'm here today to encourage the reopening of our parks and athletic fields. First off, I'd like to congratulate our district's councilwoman, Deborah Stark, on her victory this past week. And I'm here today to ask you to help give a victory to all the boys and girls patiently waiting on the sideline to get back out on the City of Phoenix playing fields. I understand why fields were closed back in December, and I totally agree with the city council's decision to do that. We had a huge streaming in of out-of-state kids coming to play in large tournaments here in the valley during a time when we weren't quite ready for it. But while shutting down those large gatherings, you also ended small leagues like ours, who feature two to three games on a Saturday. We had been social distancing, wearing masks, and abiding by all city guidelines. But we got lumped in with all the large gatherings and tourneys and canceled all the same. But now we feel it's the time to bring back youth athletic sports on the City of Phoenix fields, time to energize the Phoenix youth with hope, exercise, and athleticism, to get kids off the sidelines and back amongst friends and peers. Look, I have kids in my league who have managed to find a way to play sports all through this pandemic. But I also have kids that I know haven't left their front yard in over a year. But I believe it's the right time to give them the option of getting back out there. In Phoenix, we don't have the luxury of waiting to open up for when the summer starts, as we don't run leagues and do sports that much in 110-degree weather. We hope you'll consider the action of opening up fields again today and let the youth of Phoenix exercise their right to safely play sports. Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you. Rick will be our final speaker today.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. First off, before I speak about the opening of the parks, I do want to admit that you've already done this today. I want to recognize the Parks and Recreation staff. I can't ask for better support from the Parks and Rec staff, not only in the supporters we've been able to play, when we were able to play, but also just in communicating with us and our members, as well as working with the public in general. So again, with Cynthia, Inger, and Tracy Hall as well, just to give a big, huge thank you. And council members, I hope you can all reach out to them individually and thank them as well. I'm the chief executive officer with the Arizona Soccer Association. We have 16,000 registered City of Phoenix athletes playing in our events and in our leagues. Right now, there... Many of them are actually traveling outside of Phoenix to continue to play. Getting the opportunity to play where they live and in their own communities, whether that be Deans Hill Park, where we talked about pickleball starting, or Manzanita, or Akoma, throughout the City of Phoenix, making sure they get an opportunity to play at home would be a huge, huge win for everybody. Our commitment to the City of Phoenix, to each of you as you work through this, is whatever restrictions you may have, I think we've demonstrated already that we will work within those restrictions. We work with those restrictions, and we'll do it in a manner that supports the City of Phoenix and ensuring that we do things in a way that promotes the City of Phoenix, both on the field and off the field. I thank you guys very much for your time today and look forward to your decision.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. So before I go into my comments and a motion, Cynthia, I just had a question for you. So when you did your presentation, you talked about spectators. And I just want to make sure that we are, you know, given what Dr. Papescu just talked about right now, that we are still mandating masks for spectators as well at the parks when coming and seeing a game?
Yes, Councilwoman Guardado, members of the City Council, that is correct. In our return-to-play guidelines, we do ask every group to adhere to those. And there is a requirement that all... And there is a requirement that all coaches, spectators, officials, and the children when not playing, wear masks. And even though the requirement is not for children while playing, they are still encouraged to do so.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for that. So with that, first, I I wanted to thank, I just wanted to thank all of the city, city parks and recreation department leadership and employees for the incredible job they have done throughout the pandemic. As a mother of two young kids, I understand how important our parks have been for our young people and our families during this challenging challenging time. I completely understand. I've had two kids, a four-year-old and a ten-year-old, playing in the front yard and playing in the backyard. So I completely understand what a lot of our families are going through. After reviewing the city's plan, meeting with Dr. Phillips and Dr. Papescu, and talking with community leaders, I am supportive of reopening our outdoor amenities in a way that ensures our city employees are safe and that those who use our park amenities are adhering to our safety precautions. I expect folks to rise to the occasion, but want to be clear that part of the staff recommendation includes a piece of oversight and compliance. It is important to note that sport groups found to not be following safety guidelines will be at risk of forfeiting their reservation for the remainder of the season or tournament. It is my hope we, as a community, can embrace these guidelines and be mindful of one another as we continue to reopen our city amenities. Secondly, I would like to comment on the opening of our city pools. Like the parks, I think these are such incredible asset to our community. But we need to continue with precaution as we work towards increasing accessibility to the vaccine to our general public. It is just as crucial that we are respecting social distancing and safety guidelines at the pools as it is our parks. With limited staffing and resources, I think it is important that our lifeguards are focused on their important role. This is why I am recommending that for the time being that children attending the public pools are accompanied by someone at least sixteen years of age. This will help with the enforcement of additional rules and have responsibility party if issues arise. I want to make clear I am open to reevaluate this this later in the summer as a reality around COVID changes. But but for the time being, it is something I think it's critical for the safety of our residents. With that, Mayor, I have a motion, if that's okay.
Please do.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of staff recommendations to reopen outdoor parks and amenities to include the following: ramadas and picnic tables, basketball and volleyball courts, outdoor fitness equipment and sport complexes, field reservations for practices, games, and local tournaments with modifications as outlined in the Parks and Recreation Department's return-to-play guidelines, which will include spectators wearing masks at all times. And for the twenty twenty-one pool season, we open swimming pools to include free swim lessons, reservable family swim blocks, and implement a policy that requires open swim participants to be accompanied by an individual who is a minimum of sixteen years of age.
Second. And just can I get a point of clarification? I will continue to second it. So if, let's say, four children going to swim lesson have one sixteen-year-old with them, and they all have permission to have that sixteen-year-old, you're okay with that, right? It's just that they have to have some kind. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I I think just to clarify that more, it was more, I mean, I mean, we talked about this a lot with open swim. We just want to make sure that there's someone supervising the little ones when it comes to horseplay and all of that during the time in the pool.
I got it. Okay, I second it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for the motion. I will go first to Councilwoman Pastore and then Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make be clear, Cynthia, and if you could repeat what you had stated about spectators wearing masks, about youth wearing masks. What I heard were they were required to wear masks except when they were playing.
Yes, that is correct. Councilwoman Pastore, members of the city council, you are correct. It would be for all spectators, which would include parents, anyone watching the game, as well as coaches and officials and players when they are not playing. So participants not playing would be required to wear a mask. If they are actively playing, it's not a requirement, but they are still encouraged to do so.
Okay, can I add that to the motion?
Sure, or I don't know if you want to ask the doctor and see what she thinks about kids wearing or not wearing the mask while they're playing?
Yeah, you know, I think it's tough because we have seen studies that have shown athletes can wear masks. The hard part is honestly seeing what we've experienced with college sports and also professional sports. It becomes challenging at best to maintain that. And because the interactions are so brief and outside, that does become a lower-risk environment. I would say maybe have it be a recommendation. I think a mandate is going to be quite difficult, and I would really focus on the time that they're going to be off the field, standing next to each other, talking face to face. I mean, that that would be from a risk approach, the highest risk, in my opinion.
So I, or I don't know if Dr. Phillips wants to say anything before I say.
No, I I concur with my partner. You know, early on in the pandemic, we spent a significant amount of time trying to risk stratify different sports, especially when we were making recommendations to schools last year as far as there's a big difference between the risk of wrestling and the risk of tennis. And so the sports that have been chosen to reopen at this point are on the side of the spectrum that are safer. And those interactions where you are close to another person are brief and and not necessarily face to face as some other sports would be. So that's all that I would add. There's nothing without risk. So our job is to help minimize that risk as much as possible, and I think that the plans that are in place do that.
Thank you. Mayor?
Please continue, thank you.
So I would like to add that to the motion. And the reason why I like to add it to the motions is because it's very direct. And we're very clear on our direction in opening up the fields and what needs to happen. So there's some clarity to it.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm fine with that.
So we would add the language, which was, I think, in the staff presentation on masks to the motion. Is that?
Yes, please.
And Councilwoman Stark, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, thank you.
And then my, Mayor, my second question has to do with Encanto Park and Easter and the parking. Because that does have an overflow into the into the neighborhood. So my question, normally when it's open, there is park staff monitoring all the parking that is happening, but it's also barricaded, and we also have police officers there. So what is the plan for that, or is it just easier to open up the parking?
Thank you, Councilwoman Pastore, members of the city council. We do have a plan in place to address that. You are correct. As you know very well, Encanto is one of our busiest parks on Easter weekend. And even prior to COVID, we had plans in place where we would work with the Streets Department and our staff to make sure barricades were out in appropriate places in the neighborhood and around the park to help with that. We will have a heavy staff presence, our Parks and Recreation staff. Members of our management team will also be out there to help address those kinds of issues. And we can certainly work with the Police Department to get a couple officers out there with us as well. And and I think that that answers Brent's question as well. And I just wanted to add during discussions as well, as we talk about the motion, that the outdoor park amenities, such as basketball and volleyball, and our outdoor fitness equipment that would open right away, and sports complexes and use of our fields would begin on Monday, March twenty-second. Thank you.
Mayor?
Please.
Is there a reason why we're not opening? I mean, I struggle with this because there is going to be an Easter egg hunt. Enchanted Island is affected by this, and then the neighborhood is affected by this. So is there a a strong reason why we're not opening up the parking lot? Because the parking lot, I would say, is a good, maybe seventy-five hundred spots where there's nowhere else to park.
Yes, Councilwoman Pastore, members of the city council. Our intent is really to avoid large group gatherings. And Encanto especially is one of the parks where we've seen hundreds of people congregating together. And in discussions for us, which worked very well last year, the thing that really helped us minimize that was to close those parking lots. We did have a lot of success this year. And in regards to Enchanted Island and the Easter egg hunt specifically, we've been in communication with the Lions, and we're hopeful that they would be willing to move their egg hunt to the weekend prior, which I believe they're agreeable to, so that they could still have that event and not be impacted in that way on that particular weekend.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Councilmember Garcia, followed by Councilman DeCecio.
Thank you, Mayor. Cynthia, I had a question around leagues that our city ran, like the softball leagues and so on. Are we moving forward with those?
Councilman Garcia, members of the city council. At this time, we are not moving forward with our typical youth and adult sports leagues. We would be looking to start youth clinic-type of events, situations where social distancing outdoors would lend themselves to be easier versus full-contact leagues at this time.
Thank you for answering that. And I just wanted to speak a little bit to the coaches and all the folks that have been patient with the City of Phoenix. I know it's been difficult with us being closed and all the other cities around us being open. I think the numbers that were shown earlier show that it was the responsible thing to do. I know a lot of us took a lot of heat for it. I'm happy that we did it as a city. And now that we're able to open up, we're doing it in this safe, in the in this safe manner. And so I want to encourage everyone that's watching, and we'll do more work on our social media and try to be as supportive as possible to make sure that community is following by these guidelines and aren't putting more stress on our rangers or other folks. And so, again, we're all learning together. It's a community process, and I'll be supporting this. And and we'll be here to support, and if anything changes or if there's anything else, whether it comes to those other leagues or others that we can be helpful with. So thank you for the work.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCecio.
Yeah, just a couple of clarifying points. If I could, what is the language that's going to be read into the motion? Is it requiring the kids to wear a mask while they play, or is it encouraging them?
Encouraging, as they're playing.
Oh, okay. All right, well, that's good then. And then I couldn't imagine us doing that to those kids after what they've been through. And then the other is the parking lots. Cynthia, what, how are we, how are we going to work at opening up all the parking lots?
Yes, Councilman DeCecio, members of the city council. We have a large amount of staff from the Parks Department and other city departments assisting us on Easter weekend. And we literally have people stationed at the parks with barricades or in some cases where there are gates, you know, we lock the gates, we post a lot of signage. We also will have digital messaging boards for those parks that are typically very heavily used on Easter weekend outside of the park at least one week in advance and do everything we can to message and let people know. And if people still show up, we will be there onsite ourselves to help educate them about those restrictions.
Okay, thank you for that. And then just as a comment, I'm fully supportive of this. I'm extremely happy that we're opening up the parks. And to Rick with the soccer league and the other ones that are out there, I really want to thank you for your patience. I know we've met on these before. It's been a hard struggle for these kids. I think we're going to find out that the lockdown on the children and the youth is going to be very detrimental, not just right now, but long term for our kids and our youth. I think we're going to find out that that they should never have been kept away from the parks. In particular, I mean, you look at these kids, they've been out of school. They've been locked out of their school. They've been locked out of the parks. They've been locked out of being able, you know, basically running a normal, healthy life. So these kids, the youth, are the ones that are going to be impacted the most by this. And I'm glad that they're going to be able to get and get close to normal because this is a huge step in the direction of normalcy for most people. And I think everybody is looking to get into that right now. And I think these steps that we're taking today are going to move the public toward a sense of normalcy and feel that, yes, they're going to be cautious, as they should be. But at the same time, people want to get back to the life that they once had. This COVID is going to be with us for a very long time. We're going to have multiple strains that are out there. And this isn't the first round or the last round that we're going to see. We're going to see this, and we just need to be prepared for that and to understand that we're going to have to learn how to live a way that's safe, but at the same time realize that this is going to be with us. So I'm fully supportive of this, fully supportive of the motion. Glad we're not going to be requiring them to have any masks on. I think that would just be harmful to them even more. And thank you for that, Mayor.
Mayor?
Councilman Nowakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, first of all, I just want to thank our city staff, especially the Parks and Rec staff, for reaching out to the Spanish-speaking soccer teams. It is the first time that the city's really reached out and had that dialogue and listened and basically informed them. A lot of these individuals called me thanking. Most of the time, they're calling to complain. So I just really want to thank that outreach that you all did. And talking about outreach, how are we going to inform individuals, especially youth leagues from baseball, football, soccer, that the parks are open and what the guidelines are? And once we inform them about the guidelines, what type of enforcement is there going to be if they're caught not wearing their masks, not practicing social distancing? And and what what are those consequences?
Councilman Nowakowski, members of the city council. To answer your first question, what what we will be doing to inform the community is working with both English and Spanish media to get the information out, social media, our website. And on top of those methods, later today, if this gets approved, we will be sending notification out through our registration system to all of those folks who have made reservations through our registration system in the past. It's a it's a large number of people that we will send a message to this evening, explaining the results of today's vote and how they can go about submitting their applications again to reserve our fields, which, again, play would begin on those fields on Monday, March twenty-second. In regards to our Easter plan, it would be similar in the sense of working with both English and Spanish media outlets. We also will have messaging on billboards, as we did last year, and lots of signage in and around the parks. And to your second question on enforcement, our Parks and Recreation Park Rovers are our first point of contact for the individuals that have reservations on our fields. These are staff members that have relationships with these user groups, and they see them regularly out in the parks. And so those would be the individuals monitoring our parks, talking to the groups about the importance of compliance. If they do see a group not in compliance, that group will get a warning verbally and in writing. And if they see that same group a second time, then they would then forfeit the remainder of their reservations. Or in the case of a tournament, the tournament would be canceled or suspended at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Waring.
Thanks, Mayor. Just just for our staff, just if I have it completely right. So so if I had to sum it up, the outdoor stuff is opening. it up, the outdoor stuff is opening immediately, the complexes are opening on next Monday, the 22nd, and the pools are opening Memorial Day weekend on the 29th, which is pretty much when they would normally be opening. Is that a fair summary if I had to do it in two sentences?
Yes, Councilman Waring, members of the City Council, you said it perfectly. That is correct.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Just wanted, because there's been a lot of moving parts and dates and so forth, so I just wanted to make sure that it's clear for anybody watching at home.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pastor.
I just have one more question or ask. Cynthia, could you reach out to Brett Kleiman in the Encanto-Palm Croft area to explain what the plan is for Easter?
Yes, Councilwoman Pastor, I'd be happy to reach out to Brett, thank you.
Okay. And then, this past Sunday, I was out walking my dog at Encanto, and every parking lot, every parking space was taken, and the park was at, pretty much back to capacity. So, um, I'm, I, the reason why I'm bringing that up, because I'm really concerned about Easter, so. And even if we moved the Easter egg hunt one weekend before, are we going to be limiting, how are we going to limit the Easter egg hunt? Because it cut, when, it happens in phases. So are we going to limit, once the parking lot is full, then, then what happens?
Yes, Councilwoman Pastor, members of the City Council, great question. So any special events currently that will have more than 50 people go through the City Manager's Office Special Event Review Committee? So we would work with the Lions to guide them through that process, to, and, and within that process, the same public health professionals, you know, the doctors that are with us today are also on that committee, and they would receive guidance on how they could have that event safely, and so it may look a little different than it has in the past, but they would get guidance through that application process. And to your previous point about Encanto being busy, absolutely, that's something that we're working on regularly as far as monitoring the park and doing the best we can to address those large group gatherings.
Thank you. Thank you to the staff and everyone.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any additional comments?
Mayor, just a comment. In the future, if we can look for some Corona relief funds to help out some of these teams with the cost of the lighting and rental of the fields, I know a lot of the teams have, it's been over a year that they've been practicing on our soccer fields, and they stopped their fundraising, and a lot of these are from low-income areas that are really hurting for those resources just to pay the lights and, and the, and the fees for the courts, so if there's somehow, some way we can look into that for the, for the future for some type of a, a waiver or so, I'd like to see that on the agenda in the future.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stark.
Actually, I think Councilman Noakowski brought up a good point. Because of the pandemic, you're right, all these leagues have not been able to fundraise, and so they probably are financially strapped, so I, I, I think he's come up with a, a great suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. I would be supportive of, of maybe some aid generally for youth programs, including programs for arts, educational STEM, you name it. I think there's a lot of folks who, who serve our community who have definitely had a hard COVID and are trying to be safe. I want to thank our public health and medical professionals for advising on this. We want to make science and data-based decisions, and we appreciate your expertise. There's no perfect answer, but we're trying to balance risk with the ability of, of our residents to recreate safely outside and, and enjoy the great Phoenix Parks and Recreation System. So thank you both for helping craft this policy. If there are no further comments, roll call.
Councilman DeCecio?
A very happy yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wardato?
Mayor, can I explain my vote?
Please.
So I, I'm going to be voting yes on this. I'm very excited. I'm definitely agreeing with Councilmember Noakowski, trying to figure out a way, how do we, how do we help families that have been stuck at home and still don't have a job? So I'm excited that part of the motion is to give free lessons to, to our kiddos when they come into our swimming pool, so exciting to see that the City of Phoenix will be doing free swimming lessons this year, so definitely a very happy yes. Thank you.
Councilman Noakowski?
As a father of six children, heck yeah.
Councilwoman Pastor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stark?
Yes.
Councilman Waring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Gallego?
Yes.
And Mayor, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will next move to the fiscal year 2021-26 Preliminary Five-Year Capital Improvement Program. Some very exciting investments from the City of Phoenix. I want to thank our Assistant City Manager, Jeff Barton, who has been promoted multiple times, I think, while we've been developing this budget, but thank you for taking on multiple roles and still moving this forward, as well as Amber Williamson, our Budget and Research Director, who's been doing a lot of innovative things in the role, and all overseen by our City Manager, Ed Zirker. Thank you all. With that, I will turn it over to Jeff Barton.
Mayor, members of the Council, good afternoon. We do have a two-part presentation today. The first one is our five-year CIP, which is about a $7.8 billion program, and I will turn it over to Amber Williamson, Budget and Research Director, and Deputy Budget and Research Director, Chris Fazio, who will provide more information and substance around the, that CIP program.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the Council. We're here to present our Preliminary Capital Improvement Program for '21 through '26. As you know, our Capital Improvement Program is a five-year plan for capital projects needed to replace and improve city infrastructure and systems. It represents infrastructure maintenance and development, that is your, a top priority of the Council. It includes a program of $7.8 billion. Next year is $1.7 billion, total of 750 projects. We are leveraging federal and state funding, and our capital projects do help to create and sustain jobs. With that, I will hand it over to Deputy Budget Director, Chris Fazio.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of Council. The CIP represents the city's infrastructure investment. Over 85% of the budget is directed to the water, wastewater, aviation, public transit, street transportation and drainage programs. The remainder is accounted for by programs like information technology and public works. Looking at the CIP by funding source, the general fund continues to be at a higher level than it was historically, driven by major maintenance of general fund facilities. 2001 and 2006 general obligation bond funds have nearly been fully spent. Most CIP funding comes from restricted funding sources, special revenue funds such as Transportation 2050, enterprise funds like water and convention center revenues, bond funds backed by restricted funds, and other capital funds like development impact fees. As Amber mentioned, the program includes about 750 projects, so just to highlight a few of those, the Facilities CIP includes mitigation of the highest priority facilities deficiencies identified through an assessment program, which is also funded throughout the five-year CIP. Extensive water and street infrastructure will be constructed, including infrastructure in the northwest area of the city to facilitate development and drought mitigation efforts. Fires, aging computer-rated dispatch system will be replaced. Aerial fleet replacement program is included to begin replacing one end-of-life unit per Improvements at Sky Harbor Airport will continue, including construction of a new concourse in Terminal 4. Construction will begin on a new fire station at 99th Avenue and Lower Buckeye Road. Funding is allocated to improve and renovate parks throughout the city. And finally, the transit program includes both bus rapid transit and light rail construction. For those who are interested in looking in the CIP in detail, the Preliminary CIP report is available on the Budget and Research website and contains information on all 750 of these Today's high-level overview of the CIP is for information only. Again, full details are available online. In the coming months, staff will update this preliminary CIP to reflect carryovers, updated cost estimates, and updated resource estimates, and will return to you in June for adoption of the five-year CIP, followed by legal budget adoption steps and property tax levy adoption in July. That concludes this presentation, and we can take your questions.
Thank you so much. The city's going to be making some important investments in moving our population, clean water, and, and other key services. Councilmember comments? All right, hearing none, we will go to our trial budget presentation, item number two, and we'll ask our team to continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the Council, we, we are really excited to be here today to present to you the Fiscal Year 21-22 Trial Budget, and this kicks off our legal adoption process. Today's trial budget is actually a very special document to me, because, again, I think honestly, this is hands-down one of the best budgets that we've produced, especially considering where we've been. And with that being said, I do want to take a moment before we actually begin our, our formal presentation and just kind of remind everybody of the things that we have, in fact, accomplished. So first and foremost, our, our trial budget, our City Manager likes to symbolically refer to it as a, as a weather balloon. That weather balloon is designed to gauge and elicit the feedback of the people that we serve on a daily basis, those residents of Phoenix. Given where we were just a year ago, I, I firmly believe that this trial budget actually represents much, much more than being a, a weather balloon. So if you think back just a decade ago, Phoenix, like the rest of the country, we were facing one of the worst economic downturns in modern history. As a result of the Great Recession, our city, our residents, and our employees faced near financial collapse. As a result of that Great Recession, we as a city faced a $273 million budget shortfall. Our employees faced furloughs and pay cuts, we cut hundreds of vacant positions, and services to our community were drastically reduced. Fast forward to 2020, we were facing not just a global health crisis, but we were also facing a national and a local call for addressing public safety and police reform. You know, it's often said that when times get tough and days get dark, you really find out who you are, and I firmly believe that this 21-22 budget, it shows who Phoenix is, but it also shows who Phoenix is going to be and what it plans to be, by first and foremost making a substantial investment in our most valuable resource, the City of Phoenix employee. Second, by introducing one of the greatest and largest mental health and behavioral health programs, investments in the city's history, and addressing public safety and police reform through transparency. It also includes investing in efforts to mitigate climate change and heat readiness. It also provides resources to address affordable housing and homelessness. And finally, this trial budget also provides the resources to address our communities as well as build for future growth. So as I sit here today and I think back of all the things that we've accomplished over the last decade and the last year, and I think about the hope that this budget offers and the promise that this budget offers, I can't help but think of something that the late, great Maya Angelou wrote. Now, it's not often that you actually get a Maya Angelou quote in relationship to the budget or finance, so bear with me for a second, but, but Ms. Angelou did write, she said, "I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." This trial budget should make us all feel good and proud to be Phoenix. So with that, I'll actually go into the presentation. So Mayor, members of the Council, the trial budget that we present to you today is a balanced budget, as required by both state statute and city charter, and it, again, is for you to elicit feedback from you as well as our community. We do, as we've told you back in, in late February, that we do have a surplus that consists of both one-time and ongoing resources, totaling about $153 million. These, the proposed additions are based on the resources that we have available to ensure that we maintain structural balance looking ahead. We also are addressing employees, as I mentioned in my opening statement, in this budget by increasing, or proposing increases to employee compensation. We are also presenting this to you two months before it's, before you actually have to take a formal vote on the budget. We will begin our community budget hearings next month. We have 14 of those scheduled, they begin on April 2nd and they conclude on April 20th. So today's agenda, as I pass the, the clicker to Amber, we'll talk about a recap of the general fund status, we'll go over the proposed general fund additions, we'll also talk about the non-general fund additions, and finally, we'll end with the budget calendar and next steps. And with that, I'll turn it over to Amber.
Thank you, Jeff. Mayor, members of the Council, I'm happy to be here today to present to you our 21-22 City Manager's Trial Budget. As Jeff mentioned, I'd like to start by recapping our general fund budget status. So back on February 23rd, I presented the Fiscal Year 21-22 status and five-year forecast. It shows we do have a surplus of $153 million. $98 million is representing one-time resources, and $55 million is ongoing resources. The five-year forecast indicated we do have a structurally balanced budget. To keep that balance, we must ensure that ongoing resources equal ongoing costs. Next, I'll go over our general fund proposed additions. I'm going to go over these high-level by category, and then I'll get into more detail. First, employee compensation, $118 million proposed for labor increases. Next, $21 million for public safety reform and responsiveness. $2.6 million for COVID response and resiliency. $2.8 million for climate change and heat readiness. $2.7 million for affordable housing and homelessness. $2.9 million for building community and responding to growth. And then finally, administrative accountability at $3 million for total general fund additions of $153 million. We'll start by talking about employee compensation. Our city employees are our strongest asset. We want to make sure that we recognize their efforts. They had to deal with the COVID-19 pandemic whilst delivering programs and services to the community and trying to remain safe. $118 million for labor increases. Of this, approximately $35 million represents funding available for ongoing compensation, and $83 million for one-time or non-continuous payments. This does represent 77% of our general fund surplus. It's important to note that our negotiations continue, they are underway with our labor groups, so exact details of each package have yet to be determined. Next, public safety reform and responsiveness, $21 million. The budget proposes to add civilian positions to our Phoenix Fire Department to add paramedic trainers, as well as additional 911 dispatchers in the fire alarm room. This is actually the second year of a two-year plan to increase the number of dispatchers by a total of 18 positions. 50% of the cost of these positions is shared with the 23 other jurisdictions that utilize the Phoenix Fire Department 911 service. Also, this budget includes adding civilian positions to improve police early intervention program. Also, $500,000 is proposed as a police reform set aside to improve accountability, trust, and transparency. We're also proposing to increase civilian staff for public records. The number of public records requests is increasing ever since the body-worn camera program rolled out. We're struggling with trying to get those requests out in a timely manner, and that unit actually needs additional resources in order to make that happen. The Police Department is down over 325 positions since the Great Recession. Also, the budget proposes to add additional positions in municipal court for the Orders of Protection Office. It is a priority of the Council to end domestic violence, processing those orders of protection timely is critical. The Council also recently adopted the Roadway Safety Action Plan. The budget proposes $600,000 each year for the next five years to implement the projects identified in that plan. And then also, as a result of the Traumatic Incident Prevention Review Committee, or ad hoc group, sorry, an additional position is proposed for human services in the Victim and Family Services Division. Also in this category, a bold and significant investment, as Jeff mentioned, $15 million for mental and behavioral health crisis response. Mayor and Council have expressed the desire that we find a different approach to responding to these calls for service, a civilian model. My staff actually conducted surveys of other cities that have implemented civilian models. They've proven to be very successful, including the STAR Program in Denver, Colorado, and Kahoots in Eugene, Oregon. We already have a platform to start from. The Phoenix Fire Department's Community Advocacy Program is already providing crisis response to Phoenix residents. In order to make an impact and truly service the demand... In order to make an impact and truly service the demand, we need to increase this program. What's proposed is to increase the number of crisis response units from five to 10, add nine new additional behavioral health units. Those new behavioral health units will work in tandem with a third-party behavioral health provider. The goal is to get people who are suffering with these issues connected to long-term case management, so they don't feel their only option is to contact 911. The goals are to provide a comprehensive service model, which will improve resident health outcomes by responding to crisis with appropriate trained intervention. Another goal of the program is to return our sworn personnel back to the field to respond to true public safety calls. The program expansion will ensure that we're tracking our performance metrics so we can report back to council on our progress of how response times have been reduced, the number of additional residents that have been served, as well as an outcome should be to reduce workforce incidents. Our next category is COVID response and resiliency, $2.6 million. The pandemic required the city to have to think strategically and to act quickly. One of the initiatives that the city did was to contract with public health advisors, as we just heard from our previous presentation. The proposed budget includes continuing those contracts for 2122. We also implemented various virtual technology systems and programs to allow us to connect to residents and continue to serve them, doing it virtually, also allowing some of our workforce to telework. Projects have also come about of this government section, including Phoenix 311, as well as a new learning management system for human resources. The proposed budget includes funding to continue those technology initiatives. Also, it's proposed to continue the emergency food program, as well as to implement the 2025 Food Action Plan approved by the council. The library department provided additional Wi-Fi hotspots, as well as started a laptop lending program. This has been very well received, and it's recommended in the budget to continue this. Also, we stood up appointment-only counters in City Hall and in Calvin Good. This has proved to be a very streamlined way to provide services to residents while keeping social distancing. It allows residents connect to city departments to conduct business. We believe this to be a good customer service enhancement. It's proposed to continue in the budget. Our next category is climate change and heat readiness at $2.8 million. Phoenix temperatures continue to rise, presents a lot of challenges, especially for our populations who are vulnerable, such as individuals experiencing homelessness. We have made a lot of progress over the past five years. We've partnered with Arizona State University, SRP. We've implemented pilot programs. Those are all great efforts, but more is needed. The budget proposes creating a new office of heat response and mitigation, which will include adding a new chief heat response officer, as well as a tree and shade administrator to continue strategies, working with our partners, to find ways to mitigate the heat. This ties right in to the Tree and Shade Master Plan, council-approved in 2010. Concept is to double the tree canopy by 2030. In order to accomplish that, the budget proposes adding a forestry crew in our parks department. They will plant additional park or trees, I'm sorry, in city parks, as well as to keep an updated inventory. We're making a significant investment in trees. We want to make sure they're accounted for and properly maintained. As well as additional funding for streets for the Cool Corridors Program. This program proposes to add an additional 1,800 new trees each year in nine project areas, one in each council district and citywide. Our next category is affordable housing and homelessness at $2.7 million. The council adopted the affordable housing strategy. The housing department is in need of a project manager to specifically identify city-owned land that can be used for future affordable housing units. Also, one-time funding of $1.4 million is proposed for Santa Fe Springs for some repair and improvements. This is a city-owned apartment complex that provides affordable housing units. As well as the addition of a workforce advocate to help individuals experiencing homelessness. The concept is to provide a dedicated position to work with the homeless, to get them rapid housing, but also connected to the labor market, to get them jobs and benefits. As well as funding for the Human Services Campus to provide a neighborhood and business support team to work with the businesses in the area, as well as additional crews for solid waste and streets for cleanup and sanitization. Our next category is building community and responding to growth, $2.9 million. It's proposed to add two positions to the Community and Economic Development Department for small business and community retail development. The concept is to provide support to small businesses who have been impacted not only by the pandemic, but are struggling to get going to make sure they can be profitable. It'll help not only them, but also the neighborhoods in which they serve. Also included in the budget is two positions to expand the successful College Depot program with the library department. The goal is to provide more youth advisory support and testing preparation, especially for our underserved areas, to make sure that our high schoolers can transition to college successfully. Funding is also included in the budget to increase public art programs, additional money for grants, and engagement of the youth. Also, funding for parks. We're opening the Caesar Chavez Community Center in the fall. We need additional positions to run that center. Additional park amenities have been added at Dean Hills and Margaret T. Hans Park, requiring additional crews. And also, it's proposed to continue the successful inclusive recreation program. This started during the pandemic with a partnership with the Phoenix Suns. It's proposed to continue it. It helps individuals with special needs connect to parks programming. Also in this category, additional positions are proposed for our planning department for long-range planning and support, for redevelopment projects, transit-oriented development, also for Rio Reimagined. Additionally, there's $200,000 proposed for historic preservation grants. And also funding for newly-added street landscape, particularly at the Grand Canal Phase Two in Avenida Rio Salado. And lastly, administrative accountability, $3 million. The budget proposes to create a new office of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We want to make sure that Phoenix is both a place to live and work that is diverse, that is equitable, and is inclusive. We also propose one-time funding for enhancement to our election systems. We want to make sure that we're increasing engagement in our city elections. As well as an additional position for public records in the communications office. Public records requests are growing, and in order to turn those around timely, the communications office needs an additional position. And also, additional administrative support in various areas really represents a restoration of position cuts over the past decade, areas such as human resources, information technology, and also for fleet maintenance. Next, I want to talk briefly about our non-general fund proposed additions in the trial budget. Totals $3.6 million. Our non-general funds are some of our departments that are enterprise operations, such as aviation, water department, solid waste, and convention center. And also our special revenue funds, such as the Arizona Highway User Revenue Fund. This trial budget includes funding due to continued growth in Phoenix. For Development Services Fund, they need additional positions due to growth in residential and commercial plan reviews. Our solid waste fund needs additional positions due to household growth and increased tonnage. They also need another position at the SR85 landfill. And then finally, for streets, the Arizona Highway User Revenue Fund, additional funding is needed for street maintenance. That brings me to what's coming up next. We will be soliciting community input on our budget. We'll be holding 14 virtual hearings between April 2nd and the 20th. Residents can go to phoenix.gov/budget/hearings to get more information, and information on how to sign up to speak, as well as to provide comments. Our Fund Phoenix tool is also available currently on our budget, I'm sorry, on our website. It will be updated with the trial budget come April 2nd. All the information collected at the hearings, as well as our Fund Phoenix tool and any comments we receive directly to the Budget and Research Department, will be provided to the council so that you can use that in your budget decision-making. Next steps for adoption of the 2122 budget. On May 4th, we'll bring back the proposed budget. May 18th will be council budget decision. June 2nd, tentative budget adoption is scheduled. June 16th will be our final budget adoption, and then we'll wrap it up on July 1st with our property tax adoption. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, councilmember. And I just first want to thank you for putting together a great budget with really important and exciting investments. We appreciate it. Today's meeting is for input. This is listed for discussion and not for a final vote. And so we will hear from many members of the public. But we will begin with councilmember comments. Councilmember DeCiccio.
Thank you, Mayor. So Jeff, you did a great job on this, as always. I mean, just impressive, without a doubt. You are amazing at what you do. Just a couple of questions. The budget number of the surplus of $153 million, how much of that is from COVID monies? And then how much of that is just from the year that we were able to have last year?
Councilman DeCiccio, members of the council, that's a very good question. The $153 million does include and account for approximately $121 million that was transferred to the general fund from the coronavirus relief funds as permitted by the federal guidelines to offset public safety salaries.
Okay, thank you for that. So we had about a surplus of about $130 million, not, I'm sorry, but about a $30 million surplus from our own budget, correct?
Councilman, that's correct.
And then the, and this is, you know, I want to make sure that the public is completely aware of this. This budget, I'm glad you guys were able to talk about it upfront. This budget includes additional monies for police, correct?
Councilman DeCiccio, members of the council, that is correct. We are proposing to add civilian positions to the police department, as well as the $500,000 for the police reform set aside.
Right, but I mean, it includes more money for the police department of about, I think you said $123 million? Or is that all public safety?
Councilman DeCiccio, mayor, members of the council, the budget that is presented here today includes an investment in the police department of about $3.7 million in new supplemental costs.
Okay. New supplemental costs, but how much of that is labor-related then? With the increase in labor?
The labor piece has not yet been allocated to individual departments because as you know, we are still going through the labor negotiations process. So the $118 million, once we come to final agreements with all of our labor groups, those funds will then be allocated to departments based on the allocation of individual labor groups and employees that make up those labor groups distributed across the entirety of the organization.
Perfect. So what it's saying, what we're basically saying is that the police department is likely, and I just want to make sure we're really clear on this because I'm a strong supporter of them. They're going to be getting their merit and longevity pays in the budget that we have right now, correct? Those are the pay raises.
Councilman DeCiccio, mayor, members of the council, that is correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that the public is completely aware of that, that this is what we're going to do, and that we value our police officers, and we value the fact that they've worked hard. They've gone through a very trying time. And not only that, the department is going to get more money this year, that it's also going to be paying our police officers more than they receive this year. Additionally, we're going to be getting probably close to $400 million, is my understanding, from the federal government. Is that about right on additional COVID, this $1.9 trillion? Is that about right?
Councilman DeCiccio, mayor, members of the council, based on the American Rescue Plan, we are slated to receive upwards of about $416 million over the next few weeks. Well, first, the first allocation will be about $208 million, based on the guidance. The $416 is going to be distributed based on two tranches. The first tranche is half. The second half would come either after the first half has been expended or one year from the date of the first tranche.
And so, I don't know if we're legally allowed to. I don't remember what all the requirements were in there. But I would strongly recommend that if we could, is to go pay down our pensions, not only for public safety, which is really in need of it, but for also for the other, for the civilians. Because for every dollar we put in there, and this is just something for the rest of the council, we have compounded interest that we're going to be gaining from that. We could use these monies on a one-time thing, and that's all you get. You get it for one time. You get a lot of money at one time. But if you put it into the pensions, you save about 7.4% every single year. And compound interest is critical. I mean, for anybody doing investments, this now allows us to have money year after year after year available in our fund, in our general fund. If we use that money wisely, there will be a strong, you know, a strong want to spend a lot of that money upfront, because that's, you know, that's what we'd like to see sometimes, because that's what the public's going to want. But a fiscally responsible plan puts a huge chunk of that, if not all of it, toward paying down the pensions. Once you do that, you now save about 7.4% every single year, and it's a compound interest saving. It's 7.4% one year, and it saves you more the next year. So once we receive those dollars, if it can be legally done, I would strongly recommend that we look at a future where we protect not just this council here today and the city, but it protects future councils going many, many years, maybe 20 years in the future. So that's at least something that I'd like us to take a look at when we get that $400 million, $416 million. How do we do this wisely and protect the future of the city and the future councils that when we're gone? Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman DeCiccio, if I may, just to clarify, your request was to use the American Rescue Plan funding to pay down our pension debt. While we do not yet have final guidelines and guidance on the American Rescue Plan, there is one thing that they made painfully clear upfront, that we cannot use these funds to pay down pensions. So I just wanted to make sure that you understood that on the front end.
Well, if we have a surplus somewhere, you're right. But if that's the case, then that would make it very difficult. But if we do have any surplus in monies anywhere, we really ought to be thinking about paying down these pensions, Jeff. And I'm glad I asked it that way, because I don't know if it is legal to do that, you know, when you get those dollars. But thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, I just wanted to thank Jeff and the team for putting together this budget. I'm excited to see the money that's going to be going into Santa Fe Springs, the monies that we're putting into our economic development plan. Definitely a lot of work that needs to be done still in the city, and I am very excited about how much we're actually giving back to the community and what we're going to be putting into the community on different ends. So I love the creativity and all the great work that you guys have put into this. I feel the passion. I feel all the great work. And now looking forward to all of the virtual meetings that we will be doing with all of our constituents, to hear from them. How do they feel about this? And what are some of the exciting things that they would also like to see added? So very, very excited. I can see 2021 turning out to be an amazing year. So thank you, staff. Thank you for everything you guys do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Guardado. And I know you have been advocating since your first week in office for some of those economic development investments. So this is very exciting. We can move forward. Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm very excited about this budget. And I did have one point of clarification for staff. In the money set aside for cleanups and the Human Services Campus, when I met with you, you said we would also be able to use some of that for St. Vincent de Paul on Hesh Road in Sunny Slope. Is that still true, or did we just not have enough money?
Councilwoman Stark, members of the council, no, that's correct. Part of those cleanup crews will also be for that location at 10th Avenue and Hatchery.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Yes, I am very excited to see the progress. I'm glad that we actually have a surplus, given that we've been in a pandemic for over a year. I was afraid we wouldn't have any kind of surplus, so this is very exciting news. Thank you for everything you guys have done. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you for your advocacy. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm excited with a lot of the parts of the budget. I really do think we're responding to the moment in the sense of looking into public health. I'm really thankful that we're considering that. The same with the Equity and Diversity Office. I think both of those are going to really put us in a place where we can make better decisions, both in regards to monies that are coming in or, you know, policies and things we're pushing at the city. Also really excited about the heat office. Whatever people feel, or however people feel about global warming, we know Phoenix for sure is getting hotter. So it's important that we consider that, not only for everyone in the city, but definitely people without shelter and other folks. people without shelter and other folks. Really excited about the mental health department. I do think it's, it's one of the, the most proven ways we've seen across the country to limit police interactions and to better serve people that have been going through mental health situations or, you know, addiction situations, all sorts of things. So I really think it's going to limit police interactions and, and better serve our community. I do think, and, and I know that this is just the first part, but for folks watching, I think for all these departments, we're going to look for community input, leadership. We will have broader meetings about what these departments are going to look like, and, and there'll be an opportunity for folks to have community input within them. Last thing I want to say about this budget, I think being able to support our employees is something that's really important. To the tune of seventy-seven percent of, of these funds are going to go back to our employees. A lot of them stuck with us since that recession that was talked about earlier by not having raises for almost ten years. And so I'm glad that we're able to take care of, of our essential workers. There's an essential worker mural that's being debuted today on 16th Street and McDowell on District Eight. And, and I think with that same sentiment, if we've learned anything from this last year, is, is to value all those folks that maybe in the past have been invisible. And so I'm really happy that we're going to be able to give raises once again to our everyday workers and the folks that make the city run. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Thank you for your work on those programs. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, mayor. Want to congratulate the staff for making this budget. I am especially excited to have all the additional positions. We have had a burden on our existing employees, we've really overworked them. And this will not only help the employees, but it will provide better service to the community, they will be able to get responses much quicker. I just think you've done an excellent, outstanding job, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional councilmember comments? I am very excited to share this budget with the public. It took a lot of hard work to get here. The city reacted quickly to COVID-19, including hiring freezes and deferring capital expenses. We planned strategically with CARES Act dollars and, and made key investments in partnerships, but also looked to the future. Today, we are unveiling what will be the largest new program during my time as an elected official, fifteen million dollars for our behavioral health response. This really is exciting and meets the needs of our community. We've been seeing an increasing number of calls to 911 for behavioral health-related reasons. We know that we needed to adapt city services and make a big investment. There was a lot of work to get here today. Amber mentioned, we've studied Denver, Eugene, Oregon, and other programs. I want to thank departments ranging from New York to Boston to Los Angeles that welcomed me personally before COVID and, and walked through the programs that they had. Many other departments have spoken with our staff, but we've also heard a lot from our local experts. One of the things we heard from our partners in the behavioral health world was that 2020 emphasized something they have known for decades, that we need more investments in behavioral health. I hope that this large commitment recognizes the hard work you've been doing and shows that the city is a partner. We certainly are never going to be able to take over all the work that you have been doing for decades, but we can be responsive and support. This is a program that has partnerships at its heart, and we're looking forward to hearing what the community thinks, how it can be better. But it really does say something remarkable, and I hope a silver lining of twenty-nine, 2020, was that we have this significant commitment to behavioral health. And again, it is the largest new program since I was elected to Phoenix's office. I hope the program will help connect people to the services they need while reducing negative interactions and sometimes deadly consequences. That is one of many very important programs that we are highlighting in this budget. The Office of Heat Response and Mitigation will be a national leadership model in our city, should we move forward with it. It would not be at the position it was without advocacy of our residents, including the Environmental Quality and Sustainability Commission, who wrote a good business case for many of the investments within that office. So thank you for being part of that. The budget also responds to ongoing challenges from COVID-19, including the need to get healthy food out in our community, the need to make data-driven decisions, and the need to close the digital divide. We're also investing in affordable housing and fighting homelessness. I'm excited that we'll have the largest commitment to historic preservation in this proposed budget in a decade, and funding for our arts programmings, program to help kids get to the educational resources they need. So a, a lot of important investments in this budget. We look forward to hearing what other ideas are out there. And if we don't have any council comments, I will go to members of the public who wish to comment. We will begin with Wendy Philpott, followed by Mary Jo Whitfield.
Thank you, mayor and council. This is Wendy Philpott. I work at La Frantara Impact Suicide Prevention Center, and I am the Director of Crisis Services. And as the Director of one out of two mobile team providers in Maricopa County, our connection with first responders is essential to the safety and progression of our mental health communities. So the, I do definitely support the expansion of the Fire Department Community Advocacy Program. This type of funding will allow for the two systems, the behavioral health and the 911 system, to merge and open up a new level of therapeutic intervention and resource connection for our community. It will allow connection to community members, members that we wouldn't typically encounter without a collaboration like this. This type of focus can help decrease the gap in services and has a ton of potential. It can help decrease homelessness, increase safety and hope for families and their loved ones in crisis. Everyone knows in the community how to call 911, and whether that's the proper route or not, being a partner that will help relieve our first responders as the behavioral health community so that our first responders can get back to supporting those that are medically ill while we focus on supporting those that are mentally ill. Thank you, I appreciate being able to speak on this.
Thank you. Mary Jo will be next, followed by David. David.
Hello, thank you for having me today. I'm Mary Jo Whitfield. I'm the Vice President of Integrated Health for Jewish Family and Children's Services here in, serving the Phoenix area and Maricopa County. I was, I am speaking today in support of the mental health crisis, expansion of the mental health crisis intervention teams. I have spent the vast majority of my career working here in Phoenix particularly, and have had a lot of interaction with the crisis system here. We have one of the best ones in the, in the country. But I do know that in the last several years, particularly, they have been very overtaxed and as has our police and fire. I believe that increasing the number of crisis intervention units that are going to be working with the city will free up Phoenix PD and Fire to do the jobs that they have, they were originally hired to do. In, in addition, it will provide a much better engagement strategy for bringing folks that normally are very hard to engage in receiving service, services, to take advantage of the many mental health and substance use disorder treatment services that we have here in Phoenix and in Maricopa County. So thank you again for this opportunity to speak, and thank you for this very innovative and creative and forward-thinking budget.
Thank you. David Oberfeld will be next, followed by Jamie Pottest.
Yes, good afternoon, mayor. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can, good afternoon.
Wonderful. Again, good afternoon, Mayor Gallego and esteemed councilmembers. My name is David Oberfeld. My role is as the Senior Director for Crisis Services with Taros Health, and I've been a part of our crisis response system in the county for the past twenty years. I've seen remarkable progress in how much we've improved our relationships with our city partners, municipalities, and recognizing the need to respond to behavioral crises. Taros Health is delighted to support this exceptional initiative, the investment in mental health and behavioral health crisis response services. Taros Health has a solid and longstanding relationship with our City of Phoenix first responders, the Fire Department, and the Police Department. Over the past fifty years, we have operated together to provide emergency behavioral services throughout the city, and we are excited to see the interest in expanding these services. Mental health issues, suicidality, and substance use are critical wellness concerns. Individuals who need the most help often struggle with navigating the ways to access the care they need. For those who need the lifelines of both emergency response and ongoing care, we understand the value of establishing trust, relationship building, and making quality connections. Augmenting and investing in services that go beyond the crisis, beyond the emergency, when individual resources and capacities are stretched and focusing on building resources, supports, and resiliency can prevent the next emergency call, prevent the next crisis. The past year has reinforced how necessary having ease of access to mental health and behavioral services is. Intentionally and thoughtfully designing outreach and response systems that prioritize care, delivering it directly to the individual, is essential in this capacity building. Taros Health fully supports this initiative and is proud to be allied with the City of Phoenix in creating healthy and thriving communities. Thank you all for your time and your commitment. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Jamie will be next, followed by Ginger Torres.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jamie Pottest, and I'm the Senior Director of Crisis Services for Community Bridges. Community Bridges is a statewide behavioral health organization, and we've had the honor of partnering with the City of Phoenix for over twenty years on behavioral health, detox, and homelessness services. The proposal put forth by the city is forward-thinking and brings much-needed behavioral health services to our community that is suffering from the ongoing impacts of the pandemic. We look forward to partnering, partnering with all agencies and stakeholders that will be taking part and will support this project in any, in any way possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Ginger will be next, followed by Sal Bretts.
Good afternoon, honorable mayor and councilmembers. I am a resident of District Six. I am deeply invested in helping our city become a national leader in environmental sustainability. I serve as Vice Chair on the Environmental Quality and Sustainability Commission, and I also have the honor to chair our city's Urban Heat Island Entry and Shade Subcommittee. I am pleased to see proposed funding for a suite of climate change and heat readiness initiatives in the city manager's trial budget. I strongly support the creation of an Office of Heat Response and Mitigation, which includes an urban heat tree and shade administrator and the budget allocations that invest in the Tree and Shade Master Plan, such as the cool corridors and funding for additional city park staff. Rising temperatures are a threat to more and more residents of our city each year. Academic studies and media reports have noted that low-income and minority residents are particularly vulnerable and experience a disproportionate impact from rising heat. They are subject to much greater heat during average heat times and during extreme heat events. I encourage the council, sorry, I encourage the council to consider the health and well-being of vulnerable communities when deciding on strategies to reduce the impact of heat. We must make sure that those most at risk are protected. In addition, by investing in trees in the urban forest, our city can reduce its carbon footprint, decrease energy costs, and reduce stormwater runoff, and address the urban heat island effect. We can also clean the air. In addition, trees can help create walkable streets and vibrant pedestrian places. However, none of these benefits can be realized without proper stewardship of a well-supported and empowered management team and Office of Heat Administration. We, as a city, should focus on high-priority areas that need help combating heat through immediate efforts, like opening more cooling centers, or through initiatives like planting trees, erecting shade structures, and developing parks, or rethinking building designs. These investments are important to our, enhancing our city's resilience in the face of a warming climate and, and enhancing quality of life for all. Thank you, and I'm sorry for going over.
Miss, Sal will be next, Bretts will be next, followed by Alyssa Peralta.
Hi, honorable mayor and esteemed councilmembers, thank you so much for your time. As a member of the Rortus D.C. Desert Botanical Gardens and the Board Directors of the Greater Phoenix Chamber Valley and Professionals, I am part of the Valley Leadership Group Impact Makers that is trying to help with the Tree and Shade coverage. And for one must say that I applaud everyone involved with developing this new budget because this really creates the city of the future that the rest of the country should aspire to, and that every young citizen of Phoenix wants to see for their city. In particular, I'd like to express my full weight and support for the Cool Corridors Program and, and tree planting, echoing everything that Ginger Torres just said, to please support this because this will serve not only as a great model for sustainability, but also for economic development and urban revitalization. Thank you all for your time, and again, very, very proud to see the City of Phoenix pioneering a budget like this.
Thank you. Alyssa will be next, followed by Anne Ender.
Hi, mayor and council, have any of you taken the opportunity to attend a ride along with Phoenix Police? If you haven't, then how are you to sit there and discuss the possible defunding of an already exhausted police department? This lack of initiative on your part to better educate yourself on law enforcement conveys that you don't have your community's needs at heart. To truly learn about our communities, perceive them from the front seat of patrol car, listen and respond to the hundreds of distress calls. You'll see very quickly that police aren't the ones posing a threat to our communities as believed by extremist groups like Pol dead. More importantly, you'll see that the danger, more importantly, you'll see the dangers that are rampant in our neighborhoods and how difficult it is for police officers in those emergent situations. I can speak for a majority of District Eight, and it is a cesspool of drugs, shootings, assaults, amongst other heavy crimes. Our councilman propagates the benefit of a diminished police presence, but has yet to address these issues and present a viable solution. We need more police. Phoenix is witnessing an influx of new residents daily, and with that, a surge in crime. We've bore witness to what occurs when a city continues to grow, but the police department's numbers dwindle. Look at states like California and cities like Minneapolis where their police and public safety are no longer a priority. Why do you think so many of their citizens are relocating to Arizona? They've ruined their communities by instituting these anti-police ideals. I hope the budget remains as is, but if funds are ultimately taken from police, you'll be doing Phoenix residents a great disservice by compromising public safety. Please don't jeopardize the welfare of the public to conciliate anti-police groups. Mayor and council, thank you for your time, and a thank you to the Phoenix Police Officers serving our Phoenix neighborhoods.
Thank you, and I would ask everyone, please keep your comments to the budget and wherever possible, if one could avoid attacking individuals. Thank you. Anne Ender will be next, followed by Luke Black.
Thank you, Mayor Gallego and councilmembers. Anne Ender, I'm a neighborhood leader, and I am the president and founder of Operation Blue Ribbon. I want to thank Mr. Azucher, Mr. Jeff Barton, and their team for creating a budget that addresses the safety and service needs of the city. I'm particularly grateful for the three point seven million dollars proposed to add civilian staff members to improve accountability and the transparency in relationships with the community. I think what's important is, is that this will enable the police department to meet service demands, such as that overtaxed 911 operations. I'm also grateful for the fifteen million that's been proposed for the mental and behavioral crisis response. I personally have watched the community advocacy program and their professional caring response to behavioral and mental health needs. And last, I'm also really grateful for the thirty-five million dollar capital investment for over the next five years to replace our outdated police air fleet. I've noticed and heard many comments that say that our police aren't making communities safer, and they have become a public health concern. And that's just not true. Over the past six months, the Cactus Park and Desert Horizon Precinct have worked tirelessly have worked tirelessly with the Drug Enforcement Bureau to get dangerous drugs off the street, specifically thousands of fentanyl pills. Is that not making our community safer and decreasing public health issues? So with the expansion of the crisis response, this will return PD to the field to let them continue to do this kind of positive work. In closing, there are countless examples of Phoenix Police Department keeping our community safe. And public safety is not just a function of the police department, but a partnership that includes residents, block watch volunteers, and neighborhood leaders. Thank you for this budget.
Mayor, Mayor... Anne's one of my...
Do you have a question for Anne?
No, just more of a comment and thank her for all the work that she's done. I mean, Anne, just so that you know too, this budget has more money for police, more money for police pay, they'll make more than they did last year. And there are a lot of us, including yourself, that have been out there to make sure that we protect those that protect us and that are very grateful for the police department and all that they do every day to protect us. And so I want to thank you for leading the charge on the volunteer side of it and working hard on your end to make sure that our police are protected. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. We will go next to Mr. Black, followed by Lee Christian. Luke?
All right, very cool. Good afternoon, members of City Council. I'd actually like to open with a Maya Angelou quote as well. So it is rare to find a Maya Angelou quote about the budget, but Maya Angelou also said, "We are only as blind as we want to be." I'm opposed to this budget, and I will continue to be opposed to this budget as long as the city manager office and this council continue to look away from the violence that Phoenix Police introduced to this city every day. You choose to be blind to how they terrorize our neighborhoods. No new money for police, no new raises, no additional money for police. It's time to defund this police department. $500K in this budget for police reform? That is laughable. The city has settled tens of millions of dollars in lawsuits against this department in the last year alone. Literally, what the hell do you think $500,000 is going to do? What a joke. Come back with a serious number that illustrates to us that you actually care about keeping us safe from this predatory police department. You also included money for early intervention. You literally did this to us in 2019, and that was a second round of funding for a system you already had and weren't using. What have you done with the money that we've already given you twice for this system? No new money for these police. It's time to defund this department. No more money for a police department that you continue to dump money into that continues to not make us safe. It's time to stop funding this predatory violent department that is literally terrorizing our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee will be followed by Rebecca Denise.
Hi, yes. My name's Lee Christian. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, and I oppose this, you know, because, you know, we see right through this BS budget. You know, we see that the council is trying to twist our demands to end police violence and use it instead to grow the police department. We reject your attempts to distract from the real issue, that policing is bad for our communities. It's negatively impacting our health and our safety, and it's time to defund the police and invest in people. Community has been making it clear all year that police are not making our communities safer and have become a public health concern. The police are reactionary. So why don't we try to implement direct funds to proactive systems to prevent our communities from coming into these issues? Police... Phoenix Police cops shouldn't be able to get a pay or raise for more benefits. This department is violent. This department is racist, and it's been proven racist over and over again. We just had ABC 15 show us a coin that the Phoenix Police Department passes around celebrating treating protesters and hitting them and being violent towards them. So how is it that they deserve more money when they can't even hold themselves accountable, and they are racist? Phoenix Police should not have to even... The Phoenix Police Union is the number-one protector of this department. Passing an MOU with more protections and more money for cops gives plea more tools to maintain this culture of violence and is a guaranteed death sentence for dozens of community members, especially Black, Indigenous, and Brown people. Don't fund $250,000... Excuse me, $250,000 on a study of why the police department is violent, filled with white supremacists and attacking protesters. There's no need for a study because it's already been proven that they do these things.
Rebecca will be followed by Vanessa DeCarlo.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, I'm going to use an analogy to explain why I oppose this budget. If a company gives me a credit card because they think I'm a trustworthy person, they do so with faith that I will uphold my end and be responsible with the power to spend that money. If I don't pay my bills, if I max out my credit card and never attempt to pay it back, well, no other company is going to want to give me a credit card. I've shown I can't be trusted, especially if I have a history of this behavior. I can argue that it won't happen again, but it will be too late. I'm going to have a poor credit score, and I will not be given the privileges to have access to credit anymore. While the police department in Phoenix is lacking in social credit, Phoenix PD has abused the power that society lent them in good faith. Society said, "Police are trustworthy. Police won't let you down. They will keep all of us safe." Communities for too long have given the police social credit, believing that they'd be responsible with the power they have. Society gave police badges, benefits, guns, tasers, clubs, special privileges, and so on, with the false belief that they'd be responsible with that responsibility. They abused their power, and finally, many of us in the community have come to collect the debt, take back our power, and assert police institutions of the power to mismanage public safety. It is illogical to ask the community to continue putting our safety in the hands of the police. We are asking this council, why would you use our tactical dollars to reward officers with more money when they have shown that they have a poor credit history? Why are police given the benefit of the doubt when there is clear historical proof that they don't deserve a second chance to get things right? I oppose your police reform program measures that would give more money to the police. Enough is enough. We don't want the false sense of safety of the police officer. We can't trust them and shouldn't. I am not willing to lend them my life or the lives of anyone in this community based on the lack of social credit that they created through their corruption, racism, and violence. The institution of policing has defaulted on their social agreement and have proven they are not worthy of more money. No more protections, no more raises, no more officers. Let's fund real social safety and defund the police. Thank you very much.
Vanessa is next, followed by Miroz.
American policing has never been a neutral institution. The first U.S. City Police Department was a slave patrol, and modern police forces have directed oppression and violence at Black people to enforce Jim Crow, wage the war on drugs, and silencing those who protest for change and demand police stop killing Black and Brown people and defund the police. Research shows that racially marginalized communities are disproportionately subjected to police force and racial profiling. It underscores the correlation between violent policing and adverse health outcomes. The significant harms triggered by excessive police force include unnecessary and costly injury, elevated stress and anxiety levels, increased rates of comorbidities like high blood pressure, diabetes, and asthma, and premature morbidity and death. The police are a direct and immediate public health risk to Black and Brown communities. I reject any mental health programs that are housed our partnership with the Phoenix Police, and that includes the fire department. Let me be clear, when councilmembers approve and vote on this budget, which seeks to invest more money into policing, you are also complicit in funding a public health risk that disproportionately affects Black and Brown communities as a result of the structural racism that exists within policing. From 2010 to 2021, over 85 initiatives, five programs, four overseen by Ed Zirker, all sought to address the reoccurring issues of accountability, transparency... Accountability and transparency. The City of Phoenix and Ed Zirker has had 11 years to try out reforms with abysmal results, and now it is time to listen to the community's demands. Defund the police department and invest in a budget that prioritizes people, pass a police contract, and hold police accountable. No more special protections, pay raises, or benefits, and fund community safety, not ineffective police reform and not programs disguised as being not police, but absolutely in collaboration, in collusion with the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Miroz will be followed by Zyra.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Well, I'm opposed to this budget increase for the police. The council doesn't care how many Black people are shot by the Phoenix Police Department, how many people have been deported. You don't care that there are neo-Nazis in the department or that protesters are being persecuted. You don't care that people are dying because they don't have the resources they need. You're trying to give Phoenix Police more money and more protections, and we're bearing that cost. You're more committed to funding worthless police reform than you are funding actual community safety. You don't see or feel the pain of Black, Brown, Indigenous people. You don't see or feel the pain of migrants whose families are being deported. I have held that pain, the pain of a mother whose son was killed by the police department. I've felt that pain, and every single day I feel and I hear the pain from my people, from the community. So if you do want to do this, think of the people that will be affected by this increase in budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Zyra will be next, followed by Martha Flores. I'm sorry?
Mayor, Zyra Flores is not on the line.
Oh, okay, wonderful. And then I think Martha wishes to address the council in Spanish. And Martha would be followed by Noemi, who also wishes to speak in Spanish.
One moment, Mayor. Martha is not on the line either, but Noemi is.
And Mayor, for the record, Noemi is in the interpreters, on the interpreter's line. So apparently, Noemi will be speaking on the interpreter line. Diga, señora Noemi. Good afternoon. My name is Noemi. The community has made it clear all year, the police is not making our communities safer, and it's become a public health problem. We want to invest in our health, affordable housing, responses to mental health that don't involve police, youth programs, and other resources that have shown the strength in communities because our communities no longer trust them. We continue fearing despite the struggle that we've had. They haven't made any changes. I thank you for your attention, and I am not in agreement that they get more money. Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, can we just... I don't know if it's Tony or who can... Why can't we hear the folks on the Spanish line, or are there issues there?
One moment, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you.
Would it be helpful to our staff if we go to some folks who have not requested Spanish? Coming back to Spanish as soon as we are ready?
We're ready, Mayor. It just appears that they might be calling into a different telephone number today as opposed to the number that was publicly posted on the agenda.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, Tony, they have to call two places? So they call one for translation and then another one? Or how did they get in contact with our translator, but they weren't able to get online?
Councilmember Garcia and Mayor and councilmembers, on the agendas that are posted, there is a telephone number that residents call for English, and then there's a telephone number that residents call for Spanish.
So if they call the Spanish one, then we can't hear them? I'm just trying to clarify so folks can understand that I'm trying to get on as well. And there's no way that we can hear them? Because before, we've been able to hear the Spanish and then the translation.
That's correct, Councilmember, and that's why I was asking questions of our IT and our interpreter as well. And our interpreter, Mario, is saying that apparently the residents are calling into a different telephone number today, not the number that's publicly posted on the agenda, and that's why we can't hear them.
Would that also be the reason why the two folks that were called might not have been on the contacts that you're seeing? Because they might be on another line?
No, we can check both numbers.
Okay.
At least one of them was on for a while and then was not.
That is correct, Mayor. And Councilmember Garcia, specifically Martha Flores, she was on the line. And then when we went to call on her, she was no longer on the line.
And I believe also Zyra Flores was also online and then was not. But we could see her for a while.
Thank you.
So for our staff, are we ready for Annabelle?
Yes, Mayor, we are.
Wonderful. So I think we will go to Annabelle, followed by Maria Gutierrez.
Mayor?
Councilwoman?
Is there a way that we can get these folks to call in into the regular lineup? Not exactly sure what's happening right now, but it is a little frustrating. I don't even know what the right word is. It's like, I guess we're used to being able to listen to folks as they're speaking. And I think that everyone should be able to hear them. Not exactly sure if that's too hard to do right now.
Mayor and councilmembers, I'll go check with our interpreter. And so if you'd like to go with the rest of the English calls, I'll check with our interpreter and get back with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you trying to accommodate and innovate people, I think are all trying to do their best, and thank you for, even though we wouldn't expect this. Why don't we go next to Vidi Hernandez? Why don't we go next to Vidi Hernandez?
Do you have her on the line?
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I also just wanted to mention real quickly that the Spanish speakers did have the right number, the number that is on the agenda before I get started. Sorry. So wanna, you can restart my tone. Because that's been really frustrating, then Spanish speakers cannot get on this, on the system. But it was the correct number. We took it from the agenda and the right code. Okay, so calling to say that, council, this budget is a disgrace. This doesn't feel good, Jeff. It feels like a slap in the face. And the continuous lack of accountability, especially for the many mothers and children who've lost their loved ones to this department. There's no other job in the state where employees can kill, publicly align with neo-Nazis and show their white supremacy and still get a raise. This is our money and you cannot continue to use our money to fund this department that is actively killing people in our community. In 2018, Phoenix PD was the deadliest department in the country. Y'all gave them more money. In 2019, we were again national embarrassment with the number of high-profile cases of police violence. You gave them more money. In 2020, after national uprisings and cities had a decrease in police shootings that year, Phoenix PD actually had an increase of shootings from the year previously. You gave them more money again. You keep rewarding violent, you keep rewarding violence and violent and racist cops. Here we are in 2021 with absolutely no changes in accountability in this department. You have a responsibility to hold this department accountable. Police are not keeping us safe. In a report we released last week, we surveyed over 10,000 people. Only 4% said that they felt safe with police presence. In the past two months, we have called over 25,000 Phoenix voters. 92% of them said that police need to be held accountable. And when we asked them about investment, 97% said that they wanted investment in everything except police. This is not a small sample of our city. And we're still calling people. So Sal, this is not just a group of people. These are voters in our communities. Yes, we need to fund alternative responses to mental health. These $15 million should be coming from the police department. And that's exactly what needs to happen. So we're asking for this.
Jennifer Hernandez, followed by Anna.
Mayor, may I ask a question from Vidi Ana?
Go ahead, councilmember.
Sure. Vidi, you sat on a trauma subcommittee and you all explored some of this work. Can you elaborate what those conversations were like and your thoughts or recommendations on that program?
Yeah, thank you, councilmember. Yeah, I mean, mental health, as in finding an alternative to mental health costs has been a cry from families and communities for years. And in the most recent ad hoc that you all were part of, it was brought up again. And the one thing we've seen time and time again is that this has to be completely separate from the department, from the police department and policing as connected to policing. Another thing we have seen in cities across the state is that actually this funding is coming from the police department. I think the budget director said that we're talking, you know, other cities have talked about diverting 1/3 of the calls from police department to this other department. That to me means that we need to divert 1/3 of the budget from policing to this type of department. And then the last thing is that this needs to be built with community members, right? No one, absolutely no one, including everyone that's sitting right now in this council meeting, understands what this crisis and what this moment and what happens more than families who actually have called police for help and have seen, or who called 911 for help and have been, you know, returned with violence and an impact there. So those are some of the things that we have seen. Is that, one, the money is coming from the police department. Two, it is saving the police department money, which is why those funds are diverted. Three, it is being done in collaboration with community. Just to name a few.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will go next to Jennifer, followed by Anna.
Good afternoon, everyone. Jennifer and representative, my representative is Michael Malkowski. I am opposed today. I believe that Phoenix Police cops shouldn't be getting a pay raise or more benefits. This department has proven itself violent, racist and irreformable. Why would you reward that? If you wouldn't reward a brown or black kid for being violent, then you sure as hell shouldn't be rewarding a white cop. The police union is the number one protector of this department. Passing an MOU with more protections and more money for cops gives plea more tools to maintain this culture of violence. And it is a guaranteed death sentence for thousands of community members, especially black, indigenous and brown people. And I'm sure you have seen it. The only reason is no hair neo-Nazi white men have the audacity to keep asking for more is because of you, mayor. It is because you representatives, because you allow them to keep having this privilege. We literally have black and brown people dying left and right from COVID. We have working-class people losing their homes. We are in the middle of a pandemic and yet these neo-Nazi plea members are asking for more of our money, my money that can save us. If you all give them this money, you are trash. You need to instead pass a police contract to hold Phoenix Police accountable. No more special protections, no more pay raises, no more benefit increases for cops. I know you have seen that they are racist and I'm sure that's why a lot of these city councilmembers have a fun supporting them. That just means you're racist and you know who I'm talking about and you know who I'm directing this attack to. You need to pass something that says that they are not allowed to have no more special protection. That money is ours, that money is my daughter's. Instead, we have shitty parks. Instead, she has gotten sick at many of these parks and yet now y'all are saying that you don't even need a mask? That has given me anti-masker energy and that's disgusting.
Please testify without using profanity. These are important topics we can express without using profanity. Anna will be next, followed by Ben Loughlin.
Mayor, it appears that Anna is not on the line at the moment.
Thank you. We will go to Ben, followed by Marissa Leva.
Hi, council. My name is Ben Loughlin. I live in District 4. I'm speaking today to oppose the trial budget in the way that it's currently written. Deputy manager Barton, I agree that this budget shows us who we are as a city and where we're going. And that is terrifying to me. It does not make me feel good or proud. I literally got cold chills when you said that because this budget hits me like a punch to the gut. After everything that's happened this year with police, all the sexual violence, the anti-black violence, the white supremacy that's been exposed, how can we be proud to increase the police budget by millions of dollars? I'm really glad to see the increases for environmental resources and I'm trying to stay optimistic about this crisis response program. I'm glad y'all are considering it, but that money should be coming from the police budget and not from the surplus. And it's really unsettling that there isn't a plan in place yet for the community input on this program. I gotta say, it's really messed up that y'all are trying to twist the demands to end police violence and use it instead to grow the police department. The Fund Phoenix Budget Tool Report y'all have released last week shows folks on average, $100 million decrease to the public safety budget. And for District 6 in particular, it was $121 million decrease to police specifically. So how can y'all possibly say that you're taking community concerns into consideration when creating this budget? And how can you be proud of it? Y'all's attempts at police reform is a distraction from the real issue. Policing is bad for our communities. It's negatively impacting the health and safety of Phoenix neighborhoods. Poldaren Action just released a report outlining the findings from 10,000 surveys that we did with Phoenix residents, largely in South Phoenix and Maryville, to ask about people's experience with police. We shouldn't have had to do that survey, but y'all don't take seriously the experiences of black and brown communities. Y'all justify this police budget under the guise of public safety, but less than half of the respondents to that survey think that police presence increases safety in their neighborhood. And another 40% say that they don't make any difference at all. Less than 1 of 4 respondents to that survey reported that they could always trust the police. That's a problem. And we already knew that police were shooting black and indigenous residents at disproportionate rates. So the reasons y'all are giving for funding the police like this don't hold up. And it's not something that's going to be solved by throwing a bunch of money at it.
Mayor?
Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, now I'm getting messages that the Spanish speakers can't hear the meeting. So I don't know if we could take a quick break and figure this out. Or if we can say what number they should call? If they're calling a different one? Just to make sure it's working properly.
Mayor and councilmembers, if a Spanish speaker would like to call in, it's 602-666-0783. And then there are numbers that you have to press for English or for Spanish. And the Spanish numbers are 1-2-6-8-0-5-8-8-0-8 pound. That's also publicly posted on the agenda at phoenix.gov.
Councilmember Garcia, if it's okay with you, why don't we take Marissa, who I just called, and then try a Spanish speaker again? Would that work?
They're letting me know that they can't hear now. That something shifted, but the folks that are on the line now can't hear on their end what's happening in the meeting. So I'm just communicating. I hope we can figure it out. I'd also appreciate if Mario, you can repeat the information that Tony just gave in Spanish, please.
Speaking with the interpreter at this moment, trying to resolve the issue. There was an issue where the Spanish speakers were calling a different number, not posted on the agenda. The interpreter was, there was a brief pause in the interpretation while the interpreter was trying to deal with the IT department and see what the issue is. The interpreter is now available to continue interpreting as he has been doing throughout the whole meeting from the very beginning. And now, mayor, if the interpreter can now make that announcement in Spanish as far as the way to dial-in number, even though the interpreter did interpret that particular part where Tony did mention, would you like the interpreter to repeat that number again in the instructions?
Please, por favor.
Buenas tardes, nuevamente a los de habla hispana. Este es el intérprete y se va a repetir las instrucciones de cómo escuchar la junta en español. Para poder escuchar la junta en español y para poder ser escuchado, tendrán que llamar a la línea telefónica proveída por la ciudad que estaba fijada públicamente en la agenda de la ciudad. Pueden marcar el número 602-666-0783. Y después, para español, pueden marcar el número 126-805-8808 y luego pound. Nuevamente, 602-666-0783. Y la clave de la junta es 126-805-8808 y luego pound. Gracias. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. So I'm gonna go ahead and take Marissa and then try a Spanish language and we will take a recess if we are unsuccessful. Marissa, thank you for your patience.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Marissa. I'm one of the protesters that was brutally arrested and falsely charged as a gang member. I lost my job as a healthcare worker in the middle of a pandemic because of the corruption of a police force that you all want to give more money to. 3.7 million for cops. Before you give them more money, you might want to take some time to think about how much money the PPD and MCAO is about to cost taxpayers with these independent investigations and reparations that should be paid to all the victims of PPD and MCAO's brutality, infringement of rights and political prosecutions. Stop giving them more money. They need money for reform? Take it out of their already disgustingly bloated budget. How much worse do they have to screw up for you all to realize that you need to take money away from them? How many more black and brown people have to die for you all to care? This is your community and you're ignoring them. I'm not stupid. I know that's why you're not having in-person meetings. It's because you guys are too afraid to face the community that you're repeatedly ignoring. And I'm not going to thank you all for your time because you continually waste mine and other community members and ignore the outcry to defund the corrupt and violent white supremacist Phoenix Police Department. Stop listening to Sal. He is not representing his community. And we know why he backs the police. It's because he's a white supremacist. Thank you, I yield my time.
Again, would appreciate if people would focus their comments on the budget. Let's try Annabelle. And then Maria.
Annabelle, se encuentra en la línea. Annabelle Gavino, se encuentra en la línea. Le toca hablar. Señora Annabelle, ¿se encuentra ahí? Si está ahí, puede hablar más fuerte, por favor. Yes, I'm here. Señora Annabelle, ¿desea decir algo? Do you wish to say something, Annabelle? Gracias, señora. Well, for me, I have lots of things of interest. First of all, I feel that it's good that all of these things going on with COVID and the parks and all. Kids have been locked up because of COVID. So instead of giving money to the police, they should put it towards like parks and recreation so that the kids can play like soccer, basketball. And so kids won't be doing their bad things that they're outdoing. So I think as far as recreation departments, there should be things that, there should be putting more money into that, like these little things, organizing things for them there. Like basketball and teaching them, educating them, different classes by coaches and such. So maybe create other things as well. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, gracias. Maria. Followed by Gladiela Lopez Felix.
Ahora, señora María. Señora María Gutierrez, ¿se encuentra en la línea? Señora María Gutierrez, si tiene su micrófono apagado, ¿puede prender su micrófono? Mayor, there is no response for María Gutierrez.
Okay. Let's try Gladiela.
Vamos ahora con Gladi-
For our staff, would a 15-minute recess be helpful?
One moment, mayor. Tony's coming back to the microphone.
Gladiela is on the line, but she apparently does not have any audio. Gladiela, can we hear you? And Gladiela is indicated she is an English speaker. She doesn't have any audio, though. Mayor, would you like to go to Tina Luna?
Uh, yes, let's go to Tina Luna.
Tina Luna apparently is not on the line. Megan Magdaleno is not on the line either. Is Samuel Merton on the line? Mayors and council members, Samuel Merton is on the line.
All right, Samuel, the floor is yours.
Hello, uh, my name is Samuel Merton. I'm a member of the Neighborhood Organized Crisis Assistance Program team here in Phoenix. I am speaking directly about the proposal to add funds to and expand the community advocacy program that is currently under the Fire Department. It seems like a great start, but there are several items that need to be addressed before this program comes to fruition. Uh, I would like to stress the importance of community involvement and engagement from the ground up for this type of program. Through your research, I hope you found that Kahoots in Oregon was successful because they had over 60 years to gain the trust of their community, and other cities have failed because of the lack of community trust. Similar programs in Portland took note of this and established community outreach groups as the core of their program's development. There are other aspects of this proposal that don't meet the mark right now for this type of program in Phoenix. The ongoing budget is too low. The ongoing yearly budget needs to be increased to 20 million to have a functioning department. This is not a random number. It's a number based on research from successful programs. There needs to be the creation of an ad hoc committee for community direction and oversight to make sure this program stays on track. And once fully established, this program should be an independent entity from the Fire Department and stand on its own with its first responders, responding to all nonviolent, noncriminal calls. People want a completely separate entity with unique uniforms that make them identifiable. There should also be no background checks run on individuals, no drug use reported, and no reporting potentially undocumented individuals to the police or ICE. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go next to Amy Meglio.
Hello. Hi. All right. Uh, hello, my name is Amy Meglio. I'm a volunteer lead coordinator for Grassroots Law Project and a member of the NOCAP team and coalition here in Phoenix. Um, while I originally had been neutral on this budget, after further examination of the ambiguously written community advocacy item, um, I asked council to oppose the budget as it stands. Um, crisis assistance in general is good. It's bipartisan. It saves lives. It helps communities. Uh, but we have several empirical examples of how to implement successful crisis assistance programs, as the mayor pointed out earlier. Um, so we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Uh, the crisis assistance program must, one, have a continued operating budget of $20 million per year, like every other successful program this nation has seen. Um, according to the Phoenix Call for Service, hundreds of thousands of calls incoming to 911 in 2018, 2019, and 2020 were noncriminal and nonviolent. So this is going to be freeing up a lot of funds from other areas of public safety. Two, it's imperative that the city create an ad hoc committee for community participation and oversight in the proposed multi-year buildup of this first responder department. Um, and three, because these programs free up money from the police, every other city who has done it successfully has funded from the police. So our coalition is asking that the proposal, that the proposed $15 million for the crisis assistance be taken from the already overfunded police budget, as data shows this program will open up such funds for policing in general. Additionally, I would like to amplify the demands of Vicky Hernandez and Ben Loughlin's organization. Increased police funding to an already overfunded police budget is fiscally irresponsible and absurd. The culture is toxic. Google Phoenix Neo-Nazi Coin Challenge or TMZ Phoenix Police Body Cam, their rape clearance is a nationally lappable 11%. Um, and for a decade, y'all have proved that increased police funding does not equal increased clearance rates or decreased crime. I demand that you defund the police department and invest in a crisis assistance program that prioritizes the people, housing, and homelessness issues.
Thank you. Cynthia Garcia will be next.
Hi.
Hello, Cynthia.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Cynthia. Thank you for allowing me to speak here. Um, I am in opposition of the budget. Um, but I do support the, uh, Neighborhood, um, Organized, Organized Crisis Assistance Program. Um, that's a separate department from the current first responders. Um, so I'll tell you why. I work for a nonprofit agency, and, uh, the adults in my program are members of the Division of Developmental Disabilities. Several of these, uh, members have diagnoses that we encounter, um, are autism, Down Syndrome, and many of them qualify under serious mental illness, um, psychosis disorder, PTSD, schizoaffective disorder. Um, it's one of my greatest fears, that one day they will cross paths with an officer who is not trained in handling these social cases and de-escalation. Um, these members, uh, need more trained professionals in their lives, rather than police being called to their group homes when a situation, um, has been escalated. Um, and bringing, you know, somebody with a weapon, um, is never a good choice, um, to de-escalate a situation, even if it just sits on the holster. So I am fully supporting the creation of the Crisis Assistance Program for the safety of, um, those with, um, mental illnesses, with disabilities, and, um, all nonviolent citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. We will next go to Jacob Raiford.
This session is a employee compensation. I was looking at this, 118 million, but homeless only gets 2.7. They are like patting ourselves on the back over this. Anyhow, Jacob Raiford, advocate for the Neighborhood Organized, uh, Crisis Assistance Program or NOCAP, a community resource initiative looking to create a new department that'll serve as an alternative to policing in regards to nonviolent, noncriminal calls. For the record, we brought 10 blacks from Kahoots to Phoenix, and then were completely left in the dark, which is why the need for the creation of an ad hoc committee comprised of members of the community for oversight and direction is imperative, as any unilateral decisions made by the City of Phoenix without the community's input is anti-progressive. And the fact this budget still finds a way to fund the police, it shows that you're not really committed to solutions that save lives. We need real crisis response. Uh, police departments and their pensions for so forth, the de-escalation to pain compliance, cannot naturally understand the nuances of mental health or human behavioral sciences. Not only do they not possess the years of training required to specialize in these fields, but given the amounts of trauma officers absorb on a daily basis, anyone with an entry-level understanding of PTSD could say that expecting them to gently tend to a suicide threat or perform a suspicious person's dispatch that just turns out to be an unsheltered person making her way through the community without it statistically leading to hostile intervention is in for a ride. You can't heal with the hammer, and preemptively, no retraining will not fix this. So let's put away any performative solutions, and I didn't even mention the racism this budget is enabling. We need funding to be diverted to an independent department that'll dispatch appropriate human service workers to cause, not under the shadow of police. Life preservation methods without the disruptive presence of units that naturally invokes fear and anxiety, uh, which means no using it as means to predatorially target communities through ICE either. We need, um, ongoing, ongoing funds to increase to 20 million based on research of successful programs. And while we're aware of the surplus of funds in existence, uh, funding should also come from the police budget. Why? Um, this program will take a large share of responsibility from the hands of that problematic department, from, um, you know, jobs they clearly don't want and place them under NOCAP. Save lives and stop loading that budget further. Of course, I oppose.
Thank you. I did just see some people who were signed in, uh, drop out, but we do have next, uh, Brandon Valentin, and then Lorenzo.
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, just wanted to say, my name's Brandon Valentin. Um, I just wanted to say that I oppose this budget, um, giving the police more money, rewarding the police with more money, I should say, to be white supremacist, violent. Um, one of the violent, most violent police forces in the nation is just, i- is really a smack in the face to everything that, that we've been demanding nearly for, I don't even know how long, but at least, you know, from the summer and on. Um, and then additionally, it's, it's disgusting that we have council members, i.e. Sal DeCiccio, that literally just make a mockery of us. Um, we want, you know, the, the, the public is demanding one thing. Yet Sal DeCiccio just makes a joke and just wants to do the literal opposite for no good reason, really, but I digress from that point. Um, if I, at my job, did something immoral or went against ethics, I would immediately be terminated. I would not be put on desk duty. Um, I would not be put on a paid leave. I would be immediately taken off of my role, and I would be out of a job. Um, depending on what it was, I could be in jail. Um, you let Phoenix police run around murdering people and upholding a system of white supremacy, um, you know, regarding the challenge coin too, um, that I'm sure you've all seen on ABC 15, and you want to reward them? That's literally absolutely disgusting. And additionally, dragging these meetings out is not going to tire any of us. You've, I've heard two people in support of this, um, this, this agenda item so far, and countless others in opposition, yet I'm sure, since Phoenix City Council does not listen to any of its constituents, that they're still gonna pass it anyway. You guys really need to get it together and really listen to your constituents. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Lorenzo will, um, address the council in Spanish, and then we will have Gladiela.
Ahora, señora Valdez, Lorenzo Valdez, va a hablar usted en español. Mayor, the interpreter is being informed from IT that, uh, she is no longer on the line.
Wonderful. I know it's been a long meeting for many folks. Uh, we are not trying to drag it out. Just hear from folks. We will go to Gladiela in English.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. A little bit of an echo, but we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. Sorry. Can you hear me now better?
Now you got it. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. So, um, my name is Gladiela Lopez, and I do oppose the, the portion of this budget that is going to Phoenix Police. Police are being paid by taxpayers documented and undocumented in the City of Phoenix, and we have been consistently overfunding police while our communities are in need of resources that this money could be going to. It is time to defund the police and invest in the people. We need to hold Phoenix Police accountable. No more special protections for pay raises or even benefit increases for these cops. The department has proven itself to be violent, racist, irreformable. Why would we reward that? Why are we continuously rewarding that? Uh, we need to fund community safety, not ineffective police reform. City of Phoenix needs to stop trying to avoid holding the police accountable. If we want things to change, we need to defund the departments and invest in the community. You are trying to give police, Phoenix Police, more money and more protections. We are bearing the cost as taxpayers. You're more committed to funding worthless police reform, which police reforms have been proven to be ineffective because the government that is upholding them and that's in folks, because they're not, they're not really doing it. Um, we've been proven time and time again that you're not here for the people. You're not here for the protection, and we don't feel safe around you. We feel that you're causing more harm than good. We need to put the health and wellness of the people in our communities, and Phoenix Police has shown time and time again that they are unable to put us first. We need to invest in a crisis assistance program that is separate from the current first responders. We need to put our people first, and an increase to the Phoenix Police Department does not accomplish this. Thank you.
Thank you. Um... Staff, do we have anyone else to speak?
Mayor, we've been informed that Lorenzo Valdez may have rejoined the line.
Wonderful. Uh, Lorenzo has, okay, resigned in. Uh, let's try Lorenzo, and I believe Lorenzo will, um, speak in partnership with Mario.
Lorenzo, ¿se encuentra ahí? Yes, I am here. ¿Puede hablar, señora? Disculpe, señora. ¿Puede pausar? No tengo una línea clarita. Se sigue cortando. A ver si... Okay, I'll repeat it again. Can you repeat again? I didn't have a clear telephone line.
Sí, sí. Mi nombre es Lorenzo. Yo también estoy en contra de eso, de que ya no más dinero a los oficiales, porque pues no son una seguridad ya para nosotros. Hay mucha violencia, mucho racismo, y pues yo pienso que por parte de todo lo que ellos hacen, los chamacos dicen, no, pues acabo ellos matan a las personas, nosotros por qué no lo hacemos. Entonces, yo pienso que ya no más dinero a ellos, porque hay muchas partes donde el dinero eso que les están dando ellos, hay muchas partes donde los podemos ayudar, en muchas partes que ocupamos, como los parques, a, a, como todos los chamacos que andan en la calle, y pues como nosotros como indocumentados, pienso que también tenemos derecho a una recompensa, porque nosotros también pagamos impuestos a donde quiera que vayamos a comprar, pagamos impuestos de todos. Y nosotros como mexicanos, somos más dañados contra el COVID. Como yo soy una víctima de eso, entonces yo ahorita tengo que estar comprando mis medicinas. Yo no tengo trabajo, y pues yo también pago impuestos en donde quiera que yo vaya, y como le digo, pues yo pienso que ya basta de más dinero a las policías, porque ya no son, ya no son una seguridad para nuestras vidas. Yo le digo porque yo fui víctima de, de ellos. Ah, no quiero platicar, pero a mí me asesinaron a mi hijo hace cuatro años, y yo fui víctima de, de muchas burlas de ellos, y eso no me gustó. Ay, me da el gusto dañada, y sin embargo, a ellos comer que no tienen, y a ellos se les encanta, pero habla así, ellos siguen recibiendo su pago. Y eso es como una burla hacia nosotros, porque nosotros nos dejan esa herida en nuestro corazón, de que nos arrojan nuestros hijos.
Señora, ¿puede pausar, por favor? Gracias. Well, um, I just, uh, feel that it's, uh, they should stop now. No more, uh, uh, no more money, uh, to the police. Uh, this is something that's, uh, continually happening, and, uh, I wanna mention the fact that, uh, uh, I am undocumented. Yes, I do pay taxes, and as Mexicans, uh, we are affected by this COVID thing. Me personally, I was affected. And so, um, I've gotta pay for the medicines, uh, despite not having a job, and, uh, it's just enough, no, no more of this. I was a victim, uh, of, of police. They're not there for, for our safety. Um, I had an incident where, uh, one of my kids, one of my sons, uh, and mayor, um, since it is a very, um, sensitive topic, there was one key line that the interpreter didn't, uh, understand clearly because of the telephone line. May the interpreter ask for a clarification on this key issue here?
Yes, please do.
Uh, señora, usted mencionó algo de su hija, de su hijo. ¿Qué dijo que les, en breves palabras, qué dijo que le hicieron a su hijo? ¿Qué dijo que le hicieron a su hijo?
Hace cuatro años me asesinaron a mi hijo, los oficiales, aquel mi trailer.
Okay, gracias. And yes, that's what the interpreter thought, Mayor. Thank you. Four years ago, my son was killed here at the trailer by police. And what did I get in return? They just made fun of me. I didn't like that. And so they're just full of crime. And it's not fair the fact that they commit something and they just assign them to a desk. And so all of this is happening and the fact that they want to fund them even more? ¿Es todo, señora?
Sí, y también le digo, no estoy yo de porfa que les estén dando más dinero a ellos porque esta es una burla que nosotros, todos nosotros tenemos derecho a una responsabilidad. Esto es porque les están dando a ellos porque nosotros aquí trabajamos, pagamos impuestos. Y no más dinero a las policías porque esta es una burla como si les estuvieran pagando a ellos con todo lo que ellos hacen y no son una seguridad para nosotros. Más bien es miedo que tiene uno ya contra ellos. Es todo. Gracias.
And we're all in agreement that there should be no more money to them. We all pay taxes and this is just like them making fun of us despite what they're doing. So they're not a safety to us. We're afraid of them. We are afraid of them. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who participated today. That concludes our public comment. We'll turn back to any council member comments. Again, this is just for information and discussion today. There will be no votes today. All right, seeing no council member comments, thank you all for participating in the beginning of our budget process. We are adjourned.